And I wanted to put a calling to order of tonight's joint meeting of the whole between the school committee, city council. We also have in attendance tonight the mayor, who's also an official member of school committee. We have a public health nurse, new public health nurse Lauren Buck, and we also have superintendent of schools. Just wanted to, Madam Clerk, if you'd like to, I don't know if we have to do a roll call this evening?
You, we should for meeting minutes purposes. Roll call of the members of the city council and school committee, Councilor Janino. Is absent, Councilor Guanasso.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor Morbeto.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfski. Absent, Councilor Powers.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo. Is absent, Council President Keith. Councilor Keith is here. The school committee man, D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Here. School committee man, Feranti.
Here.
Here, school committee woman, Gravellisi.
Here.
Here, school committee woman, Rizzo is absent. Committee Minsonella. Is absent, school committee woman, Carol Ty. Absent.
No, she's muted, Ashley.
She's here.
She's just muted right now.
Here.
There you go.
School committee woman, Carol Ty is here, and Chairman Mayor Arigo.
I'm here.
Here, Quorum is present.
Councilor Janino is also present. She was, she was in the attendees and she just got promoted over to a panel.
Here.
Thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, if I can just, also just start and say that I know that this is not a typical meeting night, but I think that there's nothing better that we could, that we could figure out to do on a Friday night in the middle of a pandemic. So, I did, with, with, with regards to, with respect to the school committee, asked that we have a joint meeting and also with the mayor to discuss some pertinent issues that are relative to the city of Revere. I know that we have a real brief agenda, and obviously, we may have some participants tonight as well, but I think that we kick it off with COVID-19 response. And I know that, I believe the mayor may want to address, or, you know, some of the highlights of that and open it up to the floor, and I'll help moderate it. If people in attendance from, on these topics tonight, if they wish to speak, starting with the councils in the school committee, use the raise hand function or somehow signal me, and I'll be happy to allow you to speak on myself. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the, for the opportunity to chat a little bit about our response to COVID-19. I know we've tried to do a real, strong effort in terms of communicating with the residents. I know I try to keep in touch with all those city councilors, but anytime we can have an opportunity to get together, all together, it, I think it's helpful and can get everybody on the same page. In terms of an update on COVID, you know, we are seeing some real alarming numbers. Last Thursday, we had 131 new cases in the city of Revere. That was the highest single day case count that we've had since the beginning of, of the pandemic. Our positivity rate is the highest it's ever been at over 10%. And we continue to set new testing records week over week. And while I know that many people have point, pointed to the increased testing as a reason for the increase in cases, the indicator that, that we look to in identifying the current level of community transition is not the total number of cases, but the percentage of tests that are coming back positive. And so, having that, that positivity rate up over 10% is, is alarming. Of the total individuals that have been tested in Revere over the past two weeks, 25% of them are testing positive. And another metric that we continue to watch closely is the age of the residents who are testing positive and who are contracting the virus. So, while we know that a lot of younger people have been testing positive, and they were testing positive in the summer months, we're starting to see that age creep back up, which is another cause for concern. We know age is certainly an important factor when it comes to severity of the, of the illness and the virus. And I will note that we haven't seen a, an increase in deaths that have been associated with that yet, but we do know that that indicator usually lags behind the new cases. So, you know, obviously, not great news in terms of, of the, the pure numbers and, and where we are in terms of a community dealing and struggling with the spread of the virus. But one, a couple of things that I think are important for people to know, and this is not just for Revere, but just regionally, that what we're, what we've been hearing from the hospital folks is that, that they've been able to kind of plan for and are prepared for the increase in cases. And so, I know one concern that we had back in March and April certainly was the capacity for hospitals to handle an increase in cases and so many new people coming through their doors. And the, the best analogy that I've gotten to kind of understand what the hospital folks are, are kind of dealing with is the fact that in March, they were talking effectively about flipping a switch on or off to handle the amount of the level of cases that they knew could be coming from, from the virus. And at this point, between what they have in terms of PPE and, and the resources that they have and the knowledge that they have about the virus, they feel as though this is more of a situation where they can, they have a dial, right? It's on a, it's on a switch that goes on or off. It's a dial that they can manipulate a little bit, and you saw a little bit of that in the governor kind of making a call about elective surgery, the idea that they can dial things back, you know, up or down. And so, that is one kind of important key for, for folks to know. And I think it's really important and incumbent on all of us as leaders in the community to have a clear and consistent message about how people are spending their holidays and how people are interacting with each other. Obviously, this is not only just about the health of yourselves, but for the health of the community and for everyone's loved ones. And, you know, as we kind of go into, into, we're in the holiday season, to be mindful of spending time with our, our households and, and really limiting our, our exposure to folks that are outside of our household, making sure that we continue to wear our mask and, and practice social distancing the way that, the way that we've all been doing to some degree over the last several months. One, one point that I do want to make in terms of our response, and I think this is really, I can't emphasize this enough, is the, the amount of work and the tireless effort that so many people have had in the community since March. You know, with federal, some federal assistance and federal support, we've been able to hire housing and business, business stability officers to support the residents who are facing challenges, meeting their mortgage or rent payments, and the residents who are struggling with finding unemployment. And just in terms of that, you know, a couple of metrics that have been great to, to hear, which is a little bit of silver lining and all the anxiety that I think I'm, I'm giving people by talking about the terrible numbers, you know, we had at one point, I know the, I know the folks on the city council know this, that we, our unemployment rate was up over 25%, and we were, I think at one point, the highest unemployment rate, we, the community with the highest unemployment rate in the Commonwealth. And we have seen some improvement in that, in that area. We've seen the, we've been the single largest, the community with the single largest increase in our number of people that have been employed during, during the last few months. So, we're certainly seeing our efforts around Revere Works, which is a tremendous coalition of community partners that have come together to support some of the workforce development work that we, we find really important right now. And, and we're seeing some of the, the fruits of that labor come through. We've also hired, and I don't know if everyone knows this, but we have hired a full-time contact tracer to do outreach to the highest need cases. And we've also hired business inspectors to really monitor closely the licensed establishments that we have in the city. And I'll say this about contact tracing, we've, we've been doing contact tracing before it was even called contact tracing. We, we were calling it associations, I believe. We were just, we, we knew that we needed to get in touch with people who had been associated with the people who are, who are positive. And our public health nurses and our school nurses did yeoman's work over the beginning of, of this pandemic, and they continue to, in terms of how they can help and how they've been, been helping. But, and I don't want to call out any individual person, but there, just everyone has really stepped up. And the, our, our school nurses were one group that really went above and beyond and did some amazing work. The challenge is, when you have 100 new cases, you can imagine the amount of work that goes into that. So, hiring, you know, using some of the federal and state funding that we've received to be able to, to hire a full-time contact tracer has been really critical to our response and making sure that we're getting to the highest need cases. Because to some degree, you know, the state folks have, are inundated with, with their cases. And, and Contact Tracing Collaborative is hiring more people. And it's on the, on a call this morning with the Lieutenant Governor, and she talked about the fact that they are getting, they're, they're onboarding a whole bunch of, of people to do some contact tracing. But that's been an area that, that we saw fit to, to put resources towards, to be able to make sure we can respond to, to what's happening in the community. We also, this week, we convened a meeting of owners and managers of large housing complexes, just to let them know about what's happening in the community, let them know that we've seen a significant rise in single address cases. And so that they understood what the, what the best practices were, and that they should be, you know, making sure that those are best practices are happening in their buildings to keep the residents safe. And that's, you know, what we've tried to do is, is really look at data, dig into it, and then respond how we need to respond. And this is a, an example of that has been being able to convene some informational sessions for folks to, to just make sure that they're, they're thinking about all the precautions that they need to take. A couple of other things I just want to mention, one is around food, food distribution and food insecurity. Obviously, we've seen that really prevalent issue come up through, through this pandemic. And I have to give credit to Dr. Kelly. I think I've told this story before, but, you know, we had a, we had a meeting in mid-March with about 40 mayors and city managers and other folks with members of the administration at Mass General and in Somerville. And we were effectively told that, you know, you're going to have to prepare to shut, shut things down for the next eight weeks. And this is where we're, we're headed. And that was when we were all in school, you know, we had, we had in-person learning happening. And the, the big, one of the biggest struggles that I heard from my counterparts was around providing meals to our families and to our students who rely on them every day. You know, we have thousands of, of students who rely on the meals that they get in, in our schools. And, you know, what would it mean if we shut down and had to, how would we, how would we handle providing meals to, to some of our most vulnerable residents? And, you know, having the superintendent that we have, when, when we had that conversation, she said, we're, we're already on it. We're ready to go on Monday. We're going to be able to provide, provide food to all of our, all of our families and all, all of our students. I mean, there were, there were some mayors that were struggling with their superintendents, and I'm not going to put anybody on blast, but, but they were, they were saying that it, it was, you know, another week or two that they needed time to figure out how to make that work. And, and I just have to give credit to, to Dr. Kelly on, on that and on so many other things. Because as we've navigated our way through this, through this journey of COVID, Dr. Kelly's been an incredible support. And, and, and she's been there for, for our, for our children and for the families of, of the district. But with that said, you know, Thanksgiving is a time when many people rely on, rely on others for, for support and help. And the holidays are a time that people rely on, on support from others. And, you know, we had volunteers deliver 700 Thanksgiving meals to seniors, and that was in partnership with several local businesses. And we are planning to provide additional support for our seniors, including a focus on mental health for the upcoming holidays. And maybe Lauren can talk a little bit about that. I know she's, she's been helpful with pulling, pulling some of that together. And then, one other thing I want to mention, and I think it, it was shared on social media today, our Parks and Rec Department has been doing some really innovative and creative programming, even though it's, it's difficult to imagine, you know, a Parks and Rec Department working very much in, in these conditions. They've been on overload in terms of providing virtual programming and, and different ways to, to make sure that our residents know that there are still fun things that they can do, even through these very difficult times. And so, one that we've announced today was a Santa parade that will be taking place in a, in a couple of weeks to bring a little bit of cheer to, to folks. And I do want to give a shout out to Councilor Sorino. He had mentioned this as, as, as an idea that we had been kind of working on and thinking about in, in, kind of, in follow-up to the response that we got with Easter. You know, we had the, the Easter bunny make his way through the city of Revere, and we, we knew that was a pretty uplifting moment for a lot of, for a lot of families, a lot of, a lot of children in the, in the community. And so, we're looking to provide some, some hope and, and a little bit of a smile for, again, for the children and families and the residents of the city. So, we will be having a Santa parade. I think there's going to be an app involved potentially, and, and we'll have some, some cool things that, that come along with that. And there's other programming that we've done. We have Zoom calls with Santa, with Mrs. Claus. I know that that's another programming piece that the, that the Parks and Rec Department is taking on. And what we're, you know, our goal for the holiday season, and I guess I'll end with this, is we have been in partnership with several city departments and our local business community. And ultimately, we want to make sure this holiday season especially, given how difficult it's been for, for everyone, that, that no child in Revere goes without a present. And so, we're really excited about some of the, the partnerships that we have and, and some of the things that we'll be doing and we'll be rolling out to, to make sure that our, our residents and especially our, our children have, have a holiday that they can hopefully remember for a good reason. I know there's funny, plenty to remember about 2020 that is going to probably, we're, we're going to want to forget. But if we can provide some, some kind of support to folks who we know are really in, you know, really, really feeling the effects of, of this pandemic, that's, that's our job. And that's our job collectively as, as leaders in the community. With that, you know, I, I guess, I don't know if you want to open it up, Mr. President, to any questions or comments or, or things that folks want to, want to mention. I, I know I've talked now for, for a while, and, and there's a lot to talk about, about our, our response to, to COVID. I know our, our numbers are, are, again, alarming. And I know that a lot of other communities are seeing alarming numbers. I guess the, the one other thing that I'll say is that, you know, there've been, there've been a lot of conversations about rollbacks and about additional shutdowns and what that means and what that looks like. And my, you know, my opinion isn't really clear. There are two critical things that have to happen. One is if there is a rollback, it has to be done either at a statewide level or a significantly large portion, portion of the region has to all move in the same direction and do the same things. That's one. And the second piece is that if anything is done, either on a state level or a, on a regional level, that there be the support, the financial support and the resources to support our businesses that are impacted. We know that many of the businesses that have been impacted through this are, are really hanging on, hanging on by a thread. And any further rollback would be a real challenge to, to them. And not only is it the business owner, it's the employees that, that work for that business owner. And many times, those are residents in our own community. And we have to make sure that if there is any kind of rollback, that there needs to be support that, that's associated with that. And I will tell you that there has been a lot of conversation about that, but really no clear defined plan as to what may happen. I know the governor has been pretty steady in, in terms of saying that, that there won't be any further rollbacks. But if the numbers continue the way that they're, they've been going, I, I think that will be a, a difficult position to, to keep as a, on a statewide level. So, that, you know, I, if there are any specific questions that folks have, I'm, I'm happy to, to entertain them and, and look forward to the ongoing conversation.
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. I mean, wealth of knowledge. And, you know, I know that you could probably, like you said, you can talk for a long time about this. This is obviously a really important topic for the entire city and entire world at this point. So, I know there are a few councils that probably have some questions and comments, but Council Morbeto has his hand raised. Not sure if any other councils wish to speak. Council Sorino, so Council Morbeto. You're on mute.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I understand there's an opening plan for our school system, a reopening plan based on like three teaching models, right? So, I know the decision to open up, reopen up is based on, like, opening up schools and...
You're on mute again, Council.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. So, the decision to open, reopen up schools, right, and begins school sports? That, that, that's all data-driven. Maybe Dr. Kelly can answer that. But is that guidance from MIAA and DESE? So, there's two items to pay attention to, right? Early, I, I was watching the school committee meeting the other day, and I thought our positivity rate was at 8% when they know, when the high-risk rate, positivity rate is considered 5%. Did you just say it was 10% earlier? Were you...
So, Council, I'll, I'll answer a couple. I think I can answer all of them. And Dr. Kelly, please feel free to jump in. On the positivity rate, we just got those numbers, I believe, yesterday. And that was an updated number we received from the state. At, at Thursday nights, we, we get that number. And so, that was the latest number that we have in terms of positivity rate. It's, it's at 10%, up over 10%.
So, it went from 8%?
Correct.
And now, that, the transmission rate is a, the standard, anything over eight cases per 100,000, is that, that's considered high?
So, so in terms of, sorry, little guy running around.
Those numbers correlate with one another, right?
And in terms of...
One another, Mr. Mayor.
Council, in terms of, in terms of reopening, the city of Revere and, well, the school district entered into an agreement with the Revere Teachers Association. And in that agreement, we effectively said, we're going to start the year in a, a remote-only learning model. And that we would kind of entertain a change in that model if there were two key factors that we met, right? Which one was that our positivity rate would be at a certain percentage, I think it was below, or at 3%, of, under 5%. And, and that, that our per-case average per day would be under, it was eight new cases. So, obviously, we're not at eight new cases a day. And obviously, our positivity rate is not at, at, under five. And so, this is, those are the key, those are the, the metrics that we use in our negotiations with the Revere Teachers Association. Now, granted, we, we would have taken our, our, our numbers that, that we had back in July and August and September, we would, we would kill for those numbers now because we're seeing new cases up over 100%.
Right.
Up, up over 100 cases, a new case of the day. So, I, I, that's kind of where we're at. And that's why we're, we're, we're effectively telling folks that, you know, it's, it, by what we've, what we know about the virus and what we know what's happening in the city, that as, as challenging as it is and as difficult as it is to say that, you know, that children aren't going to be in the, in the classrooms right now, we can't, we can't bring them back, you know? And, and, and that's guy, guidance that we got from, and I know Dr. Kelly will, will mention this, and I'm sure it's probably going in her head right now, is that that's guidance that we got from the CDC and from, from other medical folks. So, that's, that's the guidance that we were given at the time to say, this is what will make a, a, a healthy environment. If, if we know the community is at these levels, then it's, we can create a safe environment for our schools to, to reopen. That said, one thing that I do want to note is, and some people probably have already seen this, that Boston is planning to bring 2,000 children back into their, into their, into their schools. And those are their highest risk, really most, children with the most needs in the community. And they're, they're doing that with most likely some trade-off of further restrictions that will happen. Because I think folks in Boston know that if there are more people, especially more children going into school, there's going to probably be more community transmission, transmission of the virus. And they're trying to weigh, you know, what, what will work for, for, for them. And I know getting our, our highest need and our, the children who really need the support and who, who are most at risk are, have been, you know, getting them in the classroom has been a priority of, of Dr. Kelly's. And it's in one that we've fought a lot about. And I know that, that Dr. Kelly wants to see that happen.
Mr. Mayor.
And we want to make that happen.
And Councilor, Mr. Mayor, and certainly, these are, these are really good questions. And we're, we are going to address, that is one of the agenda items. I'm not suggesting that we don't talk about that right now. Obviously, everything, everything that revolves in our city is going to be pertinent to the COVID-19 topics. But that was agenda rated 93. So, I just don't want to have too much skipping back and forth. And, and they're all relative, and they all, they all correlate. But otherwise, we'll, we'll never really kind of cross anything off.
So, point of information, Mr. President. I just wanted to...
Just finish speaking for a second, Council Morbeto. If we can just save, if we can kind of... If we can just save, if we can kind of just, because I know there's a lot of people that are gonna have a lot of good comments about schools in general and things like that. If we can just wait to get to that portion of the meeting, it'll allow everyone, because there's gonna be a lot of back and forth dialogue, I'm sure, rather than do this the entire night. I know that there's some of the councils wish to ask about COVID-19 restrictions, also some of the things that are happening with COVID ambassadors, et cetera, et cetera, and how we're acting on that. Then it's okay, Council Morbido.
Okay. I, I just thought it was very important to ask him about the 10% because there was a public meeting yesterday that it was stated 8%. So I just wanted to clarify that. So I thought it was very important to have the mayor answer that. I just wanted to.
Every, I believe it's every Thursday, every, every Wednesday or Thursday, the rolling two week average comes out.
It's Thursday at 5:00 PM that the new data is released.
So, good question though. So I know Council Serena wished to speak on the COVID-19 response.
Thank you, Mr. President, through, through you, Mr. President, to the mayor or perhaps to Director Hampton. Just a question about mask wearing in general. Not so much in stores and restaurants and stuff because that's, you know, that's been established and businesses have to follow that protocol. In terms of wearing masks in public areas like our parks, like I'm thinking the dog park, the Whalen School Park and more so even the beach. What can we as a city do to either encourage more people to wear masks? Or I don't wanna say mandate because I know that gets, that gets into, you know, controversial territory. But what I'm seeing on Revere Beach and sometimes in the parks, people are walking and they don't even have a mask with them. You know, it's one thing if, if you're walking by yourself and you, you pull the mask down as you're walking. But if, if you're walking past groups, then you really should pull the mask back up. And I'm, I'm not seeing a lot of that in our public areas. So what can we do to, to make sure people are, you know, people have their masks and they're wearing them when appropriate?
Counsel, I think that you may have been directing that to Ms. Buck, correct? She's the new director or she's in charge of that role?
Oh. I can, I can speak to it too. I can start off and.
Let's give her her time.
Okay. No, well, she's gonna have plenty, believe me when I tell you, she'll have plenty. I just think it's really, I mean, Counselor, Serena, you know, I appreciate that because this is something that we've been dealing with through this whole pandemic and really our messaging and changing our messaging to really kind of, you know, fit with what we're seeing out there and the folks that really are, I, I don't wanna necessarily use the word defying, but really not complying, so to speak. So we started out with a very harm reduction type, you know, messaging, you know, please wear, you will see a new messaging coming out this week and it's why do I wear my mask? And we're really trying to focus on and, you know, a positive messaging. And we're trying to get it into, you know, all the different languages out there to really kind of, you know. Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm echoing, sorry. And I, and my voice is bad enough, so when I echo, it must be even worse. So, but we, you look, look for that messaging. We also have a campaign. I see Bob Dunbar on this Zoom call. And Revere TV is, has announced that they're doing a mask up campaign where we will be giving gift cards to people that will be doing a promotion for us on masking up and why they wear a mask. So that we're hoping that it hits home to different age groups and, you know, and just really, you know, hits people on why they are wearing masks. But we can, we can mandate, so to speak, because it is a state regulation. So that is something we can do. We as a city have chosen to provide a more engaging message with this because as we all know, when we mandate, you know, you will get the same people that are not going to comply because it's a mandate. So we really truly, you know, we ask all of you to help support us as well. You know, you know, one of the things that I do and, you know, people can confirm this is if I see people without masks on, I do try to encourage them. And I explain to them why it is. And I would hope that all of you do the same. But if you have any suggestions, believe me, we certainly are here to listen to them.
Thank you. Anything to add on that, Ms. Buck?
Yeah, I can just echo everything that Kim just said. But really the messaging that we're trying to start really pushing out now is about the fact that when you wear a mask, it's not for you, it's for the people around you to try to engage people in, in, in recognizing that no one wants to wear a mask. We're doing it because we wanna protect the other people around us. And I think you're gonna see that in the campaign that's gonna be starting. Because it, it really is about, it's about everyone around you. It's about the common, common good here. So I'm really excited about that campaign. You have a lot of, it's really, it's really great. So I'm looking forward to that coming out. But I really think it's also just about, you know, reinforcing the message. As Kim, actually, as the mayor mentioned, we do a lot of individualized town halls for different parts of our community. I've done a couple of them now since I started. And it's just about engaging the leaders of different communities to help them understand why, why we're asking the things we are so that they can engage their, you know, the people who, who look up to them. And so every time we talk about COVID, we talk about this stuff. And it's just kind of like just reinforcing the message. And that's kind of, you know, just reinforcement.
Thank you. And Council Powers, Council Powers, you have a question?
Yes, I do. And it's, it's directed to the mayor directly. Mr. Mayor, based on any information you may or may not have this time from the Commonwealth, when do you anticipate that vaccine will be available to a school population, children and staff?
That is a, a great question, Counsel. And that's one that we're, I know we're gonna get into in terms of a vaccine update. The timeline that the, that the state has provided, I think everyone knows about and has seen. And I know the, we've been, our team has been on, on many conversations with the state about the rollout and the details of that. And Lauren is the expert on, on that one. And she could probably speak to, to the details of the vaccine being rolled out. And we had planned to, to make that a, a, a agenda item because we know that many people are gonna be concerned about that and, and thinking about that. I will say that there are plans for all of our nursing and long-term care facilities in the city to be connected with CVS and Walgreens. And we've already kind of, we know that that's happening. And, and we're gonna make sure that the, the roadmap that we have, we follow in terms of the guidance that we get from the state. We know that our, our local Board of Health will be ready to, to help administer the vaccine when it becomes available. And we expect that will be happening before the end of the year, I think. And I'll let Lauren talk a little bit more about the specifics of who's getting what, when. And I'll, I'll say this to that. I actually, I took the time on, on the New York Times website. You can actually kind of fill out a couple of questions and, or answer a couple of questions. And it gives you your lot, where you are in line. And I think it was like 170th million in, in line. So, so obviously there are, there are gonna be really strict protocols that we, we follow in terms of the vaccine. And we're gonna make sure that our most vulnerable residents are the ones that are, are getting it first. But Lauren, I'll, I'll, I'll let her, I'll let Lauren answer that.
Since, since, Mr. Mayor, and if, since we're diving into that, I just wanted to close out on the COVID-19 response. And again, this is, all of these are pretty much on the same overall agenda. Does anyone have anything before we touch, touch into the vaccinations? Counselor, go ahead, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through all the efforts that the City of Revere has done and to the forefront that we have been leaders in terms of making an awareness for all our residents and doing everything that we feel is proper, then how do we justify us being one of the highest in the Commonwealth in contamination? I, I mean, if we're doing everything right, what are we doing that might be wrong? That we're not getting the message across? And I simply think from observation, being a layperson, not a medical person, that my observation is enforcement is the biggest criteria other than going into these establishments where you have to wear a mask. I travel Revere Beach two or three times a day. I travel Revere Street, Broadway, four or five times a day. And almost on every occasion, I don't see anyone wearing a mask. So we're not, I know, I don't know what the sanctions are. I don't know what our probability of the law is. But if we're doing all these good things, why is it we're so high? Is our people not listening? Are people coming to our community don't care? Are we just known as a recreational community forever and a day? And we're gonna suffer the pains and consequences of these folks coming to our community and not caring about our health? I saw a jogger today look and stare me in the eyes as I was parked at the corner of Revere Street and North Shore Road. He stared right at me and I stared at him. I'm wearing half mask in my car. He had no mask and he's jogging, like in defiance of like, no one's gonna tell me what to do. But we, as brothers and sisters of a community, should join together. And these folks should be, they should be sanctioned. And if we can't protect them, then for God's sakes, let's protect everybody else around them. And you know, when you're jogging, you're emanating all kinds of things from your body. And anybody walking in that whole area gets it. They're the receivers of all your, your germs. So something we're doing wrong. Because if everything we're doing in such a positive vein that we are doing, it's not working. I mean, it's clearly not working. And I don't know how we rectify it. I don't know how we justify it. And we have to go maybe think of something we might be doing wrong that could correct a lot of this problem. But we are very high in percentages. And we're, we're 10% of our population that's contaminated. We have, they have the, the virus. This, that's, that's unheard of. That's, that's, that's really not acceptable. And conscientiously, I know you, Mayor, you're doing everything that you possibly could do. You've surrounded yourself with very highly trained people. So what is it we're not getting? What is it we're not getting across to these people?
That's a, that's a great question, Counselor. And it's one that I've, I've been grappling with for sure in terms of what can we be doing? What can I be doing better? Or what, what am I missing here? And I think that, you know, as I've thought about it, I think if you look at the, if you look at the makeup of the communities that have been hardest hit, you see, you see communities that have kind of a, a, a common thread, right? There's, there's communities that have a, a large percentage of multi, multi-generational, multi-unit, multi-family housing situations. You have communities that have challenges with housing and around housing. And you have folks that, in our community that are, are generally blue collar who need to go to work every day. And so you, you, and then you add in public transportation and you add in, you know, you add those factors together. And I think just fundamentally, we are behind the eight ball as a community. And the same for several of the communities. And this virus doesn't care, you know, the boundaries of, of a community, doesn't care what you look like, what religion you believe in. But there's a, and I know that there'll be a lot of people in the public health world who will be looking at our community and looking at what hap, what's happened in, in Massachusetts and, and seeing what is the, what are the common threads that we see? And, and that's one that, that I think, you know, all of the enforcement pieces aside, you know, because I, I, I will say that we've done what we can. I, I feel as though kind of, and I appreciate the, the kind words, Counselor, that we're doing everything that we can to, to combat this virus. And there's been no idea that's been kind of left off the table. We've, we've worked with every partner that we can, we can work with to, to bring the resources that we need to the City of Revere. But fundamentally, as a community, our makeup and, and the way that our community is built and the way that our community, and the way that the people, the people in our community live and the jobs that they do, create the challenges that we have with this virus. And, and we know that, I mean, we know that a little bit through contact tracing. But I know it just knowing our city and having, you know, knock doors. I can't even tell you how many times. And, and knowing the, the residents of our community. And I, I, I know what, what we're, what, what challenges we're facing. So I would, I would, I think that people should be thinking about that, right? Thinking, and that's why we've hired so many of these ambassadors. And I know the first time that I, I, I talked about having, you know, hiring ambassadors to work with, within certain groups in our community. Some people may not have, may not have supported it or may have thought of, of it being frivolous or silly. But what we're seeing is that the people that are living in our, in our city are having really hard, a, a hard time because they have to go to work. If they don't go to work, there's another person behind them that's gonna take their job. And if they don't go to work, they're not gonna pay their rent. They're probably, they may already not be able to pay their rent. They're, they're not putting food on the table. And we see the food insecurity. We've, we've seen the, the amount of rental assistance that we've had to provide. We've seen the mortgage assistance that we've had to provide to, to people. So people are going to work and they may have the symptoms. They may, and, and you don't even need symptoms to, to be able to pass the virus. So if people have to go to work and they have to interact with other people and they have to be around people, they're ultimately going to share the virus and spread it. You know, we're not, we're not Wellesley. We don't have doctors and lawyers and people with MBAs who can stay home and work from home and, and be separated. We are, we are a city full of essential workers and people who live in, in a, in a dense, a densely populated city. And that's, that, that's the reality that we have to, we have to face as a community. And we have to, again, try to do the best that we can to, to, to combat this virus. But, but that's, I think the, if you're looking for an answer, like why, why is this happening in our city? That, that, I think that's, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other counselors or school committee persons wishing to speak on this topic? No. If I can just add on the response from the city, it's, you know, seeing it firsthand and early on, being one of those essential workers, Mr. Mayor, being able to be involved firsthand in the response was, was very, I was very appreciative because I needed it at the time when I was idle. And it gave me something to do and I was proud to help work with the city. But seeing the amount of work that, you know, I put in personally for five or six weeks and then to see how that's been carried on for another four or five months or five or six months, it's daunting. And I just wanna say to the members of your staff and the members of your community that have volunteered, many people that have pivoted their role in the city, whatever job they may have had and transitioned it into food response, COVID, healthcare response, you name it. Supporting the, the efforts of the city have been unbelievably tremendous. And, you know, you can, you can sit there and you can name them all off. And I know that there's some really, some, some highlights and all-stars. But I, it does really stink to see these numbers continue to go up. And I know that they go up, they go down, but recently we're in a bit of an uptick. But I, I know that that's not for lack of effort from our community. It's just what we are dealing with. The fortunate news is it does seem as if the recovery rate has been very, very much better. And the severity of it has, has been a little bit less. And maybe that's why, another reason why you're seeing an uptick because unfortunately younger populations aren't taking it as seriously as they should because they're seeing people recover. But it's still obviously very dangerous. So I just wanted to thank all the members of our community that have helped through this. And the hopes is, and we're gonna go into this vaccination conversation, is that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. So, thank you. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you touched base on the vaccination piece. I'm sure Lauren Buck might have some information on that, but tell us where we're at.
Sure. So I'm sure you guys.
So I'm sure you guys all heard on the news yesterday that the advisory council met and voted to approve the Pfizer vaccine for the FDA. So, and again, this is common knowledge at this point. There's two vaccines that are kind of the closest to getting to us, Pfizer and Moderna. Pfizer is the vaccine that requires ultra cold storage temperatures and can be shipped in much larger, like dose allocations. And so the state's plan is centered, is a three, three-phase approach. And at the very beginning, the first phases are centered around the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines. At this point, the, the Pfizer vaccine, from what we've been hearing from the state, will be going to acute care hospitals in the first wave. And from what I've been told from the state, you know, they think that by the end of December, the state will have 300,000 doses to be able to distribute to people. So the first wave is designed to target the most likely to get very sick and the people who are working on the front lines. And that's why you see in phase one, you have clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers. Most of this is, is targeted at people who are working in the hospitals with COVID patients. But also the long-term care facilities, the assisted livings and the rest homes are also in the first phase. And that kind of distribution at administration for our, our elderly populations in those facilities will be done with a partnership through the pharmacies of CVS and Walgreens, which has been arranged through the state. And so they will, each individual long-term care facility, assisted living facility is partnering with one of those providers to have the vaccine brought to them and given to their populations. One other thing I just wanted to mention is, at this point, the, the EUA, the Emergency Use Authorization for the Pfizer vaccine is for individuals aged 16 and up. Because of the way that vaccine trials work and the data that they have right now and the fact that we need this so quickly, they have to make recommendations based on how much data they have in individual chunks of, of population. And so it was, it was approved for everyone 16 and up. And that's because they simply couldn't, they didn't study enough people in the, in the lower age groups. Not to say that won't be coming because as more people get the vaccine and more knowledge, we have more knowledge about how it works and then they can eventually expand that. But that's just how vaccine approval works. So like I said, phase one, they're looking to start mid-December in terms of getting shipments out. Phase one is, is estimated to run through mid to late February. And phase two then will begin mid to late February through April. And then phase three will be April through June. So, so like I said, the, the priority, the, the way that the state decided these phases is they prioritize people who are the most likely to get very sick and who are on the front lines. They want to prevent untimely death and they want to help the people providing the care be as safe as possible. And that's how they determined each phase of this. And so, you know, the, the graphic is now on mass.gov/COVIDvaccine. It's, it's out there for, for everyone to look at. And so you guys can all kind of look at that at your leisure. But as you know, if you look at it, that phase two includes early education, K through 12, other critical infrastructure workers at that point. And then you get into every, you know, other people with comorbidities. So the ones, again, a higher risk level is, is going to be prioritized over the general population. That would be starting in April. There is, as a, as a local board of health, so as, as the Revere Board of Health, we put in our application to be a COVID vaccine provider. And as Mayor Riggo said, we are actively making sure that we can, we can be a part of the solution in this way. I, I'm really passionate about that. I, I want to be giving this vaccine to as many people as I personally can. I'm, I'm a nurse myself, so I, I under, it's, you know, it's, it's personal to everyone. It's personal to me too. And I'll be right there in line as soon as I can get it. So we are doing everything we can to make sure that as a board of health, we, we can also be a backup to our community health centers, to our long-term care facilities, to our first responders. And so I, you know, that's a big priority for us. It has been for the last couple of weeks and it will continue to be a big priority for us moving forward. I will say, there's, there's going to be some logistical trickiness involved in both of these vaccines because both of them are two-dose vaccines. Both of them require the, the person getting the vaccine to understand which vaccine they got and, and which one they need to get again and when they need to get it. And there are, I'd say, there are safeguards in place to make sure that we, we can, we can accurately do that. The vaccines themselves are also going to be coming to each individual administration site with, with the equipment that they need to get it done, with needles and syringes and alcohol prep and all that stuff. And so the state is making sure that's allocated for each individual vaccine provider. So that's not a barrier because that, in the past, that can, that has been a barrier in terms of getting that kind of stock up to date as well. There's also from the state and from us as a board of health, a big push. I, I kind of, I've said this a lot when I've been talking about the vaccine recently. There's kind of two, two messages we have to kind of get out there. And, and the first message is this vaccine is safe and we need as many people to get it as possible. The second message is, you know, once we as a board of health have the vaccine is come get it from us and this is how you do it and this is where it is. So that the first message is, you know, we need to combat some of the myths that are out there, some of the things that people are hearing, some of the, the fear that people have about the vaccine. And we are actively as, as a, you know, as a board of health and I, I know all of us who are engaged in this work, we, that's a big priority for us right now. Dr. Kong has, you know, is very involved in, in making sure that we're up to speed in everything she's hearing and is definitely just as passionate as I am about making sure we get this vaccine to everyone that we can. So there's also a state component of messaging along with their kind of logistics of getting the vaccine to who needs to go where. And they'll be putting messaging out as well and we'll kind of, we'll be doing that on our end as well. Yeah, I'm, yeah, if I didn't answer any questions, fire away. If I can answer them, I definitely will.
Thank you. We have a few people, Counsel McKenna, Counsel Serena, and then School Committee Man Dambrosio. Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So my nephew has an allergy to nuts. I have an allergy to pets, which I have a dog anyways. But the myth is that they can still get a vaccine, but they have to have an EpiPen with them in case they have an allergic reaction to, to the vaccine. Are they going, did they do any tests for these people that have allergies to eggs, nuts, and pets? And are they going to wait for the vaccine to be given to these people that have the allergies to these certain things?
Yep, so great question. What, what you're describing is something we call a contraindication. And that's from the data that they can, from the data that the, that Pfizer and Moderna and everyone who's manufacturing these vaccines provides to the federal government, they can determine if there are contraindications in place. And at this point, from what I've been hearing from the states, the state and, and, you know, the federal data, is that there are no further contraindications than a normal round of vaccinations. I think maybe what you're referring to is, is the headline grabbing news getting story about there were two nurses in the UK who had reactions to the vaccine. And this is, it, it got picked up by a lot of, a lot of news places. And this is, what can I say? It's.
This is, this is fake.
What did you say?
Are you suggesting it was fake?
Not fake, but.
Misleading.
Yeah, that's a great word to describe it. Definitely misleading. Because many, many things that I, I would think about that is, obviously, if you have personal concerns about your own physiology in terms of allergies, your primary care provider is going to be the one who is going to, the one who's going to be determining to you if you, if they think that you are safe to get it. And, and the primary care providers are going to be equipped with the knowledge that they need and the data in order to make that determination. There are going to be a lot of stories in these next couple of months of, of the extreme cases that happen out there of the allergic reactions or anything like that. Because this is so new and because there is fear about it. But from all the data that I have read about, these vaccines are very safe. And they're very effective and very safe. And so, you know, there is going to be an individual component of having your primary care doctor talk to you about when they think you should get it. And if they feel like they, you personally should hold off because of your, because of your autoimmune status or your, your personal history with allergies. There's going to be that component for sure, as there is with any vaccine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, this is actually a question for the mayor regarding the vaccination. So I know that this might be a bit premature, but where we are a red community and where we have been a red community throughout the entire pandemic, along with cities like Chelsea, in your conversations with other mayors, like with City Manager Amber Sino, can you guys advocate that when the vaccine becomes readily available to the public? That, I don't want to say that we hoard the vaccine, but that red communities be the priority to get a, you know, as many doses as possible to, to start vaccinating? Like, and nothing against Wellesley or Arlington or wealthier towns, but you know, for, for communities like Revere and Chelsea and Lynn that we're, we're hit the hardest, I, I think it's only fair that we, that we advocate to get as much as we can.
Yeah, Counsel, that's a, that's a great comment. And that's something that was brought up to the Lieutenant Governor today. And that she, she did confirm that, you know, the, the, the vaccine would be distributed in a equitable fashion and one that really looks at red communities and it kind of takes that into account. And that's something that we've, we've, we will push for and we've already kind of put in their ear. The other thing that I'll say about the vaccine that we, we were, was a point of conversation this morning, was some of the, the need for communication around the importance of the vaccine and the efficacy of it and the fact that we've already seen. And this is thanks to some of the folks that we have working for the city and some of the ambassadors that we have. We've already heard about and seen some misinformation about the vaccine that's being distributed. So for us to combat that and make sure that folks know that the vaccine is safe, that it's something that they can, they can take. And I know there's one, one item that the Lieutenant Governor talked about a lot this morning was the fact that there would be some independent research and independent folks will be coming out with basically their take on the, on the vaccine and the efficacy of it. And that there, the hope is that that will create the support that, that everyone needs to be able to say, okay, this is, this is going to work and we can go out and, and start to put a full court press in terms of communication to all, all communities and to certainly to most at-risk communities about the need to, to, to have the virus. But those are two points that I think are important to mention and ones that you'll probably see a lot more of us talking about as the vaccine becomes available.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank Counsel and School Committee Man Dambrosio.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a question for Ms. Buck. First of all, thank you for the awesome work that you all have done. Given the high density living conditions in the city and the percentage of community members who commute quite frequently for work, do we have any internal projections of the percent of population necessary to be vaccinated to achieve herd immunity? Or are we not quite there yet?
Great question. There's a lot of numbers I've heard floating around. I will say that. And I, I have, for the latest that I heard regarding the number that there, that, that we need for herd immunity has actually jumped, I've heard we need 65%. I've heard we need 70%. The data and what we know about the science of the vaccine is they, that I think the experts in our country and in our state are not quite sure what that actual number is. I can tell you that the state's plan is they want to get everyone a vaccine who can possibly get it. And so, you know, they want upwards of 80, 90% uptake on this in terms of a vaccine. But in, in terms of what we know about the virus, I think it's a little too early to say what the, the exact percentage of is that we need to get for herd immunity. But it's a great question and that's always what we're aiming for. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils or school committee persons, Carol Tett, Ms. Ty?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Well, that brings up another question, and this is for Lauren. I have been asked about if we get our share of the vaccine sooner perhaps than some other communities. How is it that we will be sure that the doses go only to bona fide members of our community? And the question was asked of me in connection with the teachers. Would, would there be any program whereby we would try to vaccinate our own teachers? Would they be responsible for getting it in their own? I can see both sides of the story. We certainly want our teachers to be vaccinated as soon as they possibly can. On the other hand, if the vaccine is so scarce, we certainly want to take care of our own community first. So I don't know whether anybody has dealt with that or has any thoughts of it. Lauren, you might have an answer to that question.
Yeah. I, yeah, great, great question. I will say that in terms of, I'd say, sector-specific distribution and plans, I have heard that the state is, is considering opening up mass vaccination type clinics in order to get, if, if, like, let's say we're, we're in phase one where, you know, all police fire and EMS are, this is your time, where they, they would be able to go to a specific location and get vaccinated. They're not at the stage yet where I think they would even be able to tell us where or when that would be happening. But there is considerations in how to actually get the distribution plan adequately, you know, to make sure it's going to the right people at the right time. I, I also have heard from the state that we're going to have a unique dynamic here where in the beginning of this, we're going to have a, a small amount of supply and a large demand and, and, you know, where we need to get it. And slowly, as more and more vaccines get approved, we're going to have a lot of vaccine supply and we're going to have to get it to the right people. So in the beginning, it's a little, it's, it's, it's a different problem than at the end. And I, I know the state is, is actively thinking about how to best do that. And they do, they do take into consideration local boards of health when they do that. And that's why, you know, we are really passionate about being one of those boards of health that has the capacity to do this. And that's kind of, you know, I feel very, very, I know Kim and, and the mayor also feel strongly about that. So that's why we're, we're focusing on, on our capacity and really trying to think it through in terms of how we could stand up, you know, a COVID vaccination clinic if we needed to and where, what that will look like and, and who would be involved. And, and I, I know there's a lot of, a lot of school nurses out there who would be right with me in, in order to get these vaccines into people's arms. So, you know, we, we're going to, that's a big priority. And, and we're going to try to, to make sure that we have the capacity to vaccinate our residents.
And just let me just go in that I can reassure you that we are a strong partner with the state. And we are on every call throughout the week, you know, working. And we are on every call throughout the week, you know, working directly with Secretary Sutter's office. And I just want to remind people that we were the number one testing site, the mega testing site in the entire state. We were the chosen. So, you know, we are a great partner when it comes to the state and the state really looks to us. So I can promise you that we will advocate for the needs of this community. And I can reassure you that we'll be heard. I can't promise you a rose garden, but I can promise you that we have a voice at that table. Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. And I know Mike Ferrante has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first question is to the mayor. Obviously, that the red zone has gotten really out of control right now. Right now, it's like 157 communities in it. How are they going to determine who gets the vaccination first? Is it going to be done by population, by positivity rate? If they determine a, a way of who's getting what and when?
That's a good question and one that Lauren could probably answer better than, better than I. But I, I haven't heard the specifics about how they're, you know, how they're measuring and how many vaccinations we'll actually receive. I think that's, that's kind of work that's in progress at this point. They wanted to get that timeline out to folks and, and have some idea of, of just generally what's going to happen. But we haven't seen the details of, you know, how they're actually going to get it out and how many vaccinations we're going to receive and, and how, how they're going to do that within the community or within the Commonwealth. And, you know, with, with hopefully a, an emphasis on red communities and ones, you know, Revere, Revere and Chelsea have been red communities before the, before there was a red community, you know? And so, we've been really struggling and being challenged by, by this virus from, from day one. And, and, you know, I know that, I know that the administration knows that. I know that's why, you know, when, when we were asking for, for additional testing, that's why we, we were able to get, as Kim mentioned, the, the first, the first really big site that the, that the state put out. And I know that some people think that I'm crazy for wanting to do that. They, you know, I think there's some people that think that, well, that, that means there's, you know, you're just inviting the virus to come, come through our community. We know that's really not true. We know that actually having testing and easy, convenient testing in our community is an asset. And I know that because I've got a lot of other mayors and a lot of other town and city managers who are mad at me for, for having as much testing as, as we have in the city. So, you know, those are things that, 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 those are some of the challenges that we have with, with the community. But I will say, in terms of our coordinated effort with the Commonwealth and especially when it comes now to the vaccine, we are, as Kim said, going to be at the table. We've already been at the table with them. And we'll make sure that we get what we need to, to keep our, our community safe. But Lauren, do you have anything in terms of the actual, like, I, I haven't heard anything and I, I haven't seen anything in terms of what they're, what they're looking at. And I, and I think it's just a work in progress at this point.
Yep, agree. That's what I've been hearing. A lot of their plans are based on estimates of what they're going to be getting from the feds. So, yep, I don't think they're there yet in terms of how to individually allocate to specific communities. Yeah, I just don't think we're there yet.
Lauren, I just have one question for you. When the vaccine comes out, is the vaccine going to be the one that is just the one shot? Or is it going to be the one where they have one shot, then they have the next shot like three or four weeks later? Is there any determination on that and any way of us knowing or they're just going to give it to you and that's it? It's up to you to decide?
No, we actually do know. The two vaccines, well, Pfizer has been approved now and Moderna is a couple of days behind, but all indications are that it will be approved. Both of those are two-dose vaccines. There's a bit of a difference between the amount of time between each, between the, the time you need to get back to your second dose. I think Pfizer is about 21 days and I think Moderna is about 28, but don't hold me to those exact numbers. But there is a system in place in terms of if you get Pfizer, you have to get Pfizer again. And, and the way that we do that is through the state reporting system. And there's, there's, there is like software in place to make sure that you, you get the right doses in terms of what you need. But these, both of these vaccines are, are two-dose vaccines.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other councils or school committee persons have any questions in regards to that? Anyone have any questions in regards to the vaccinations? Great. I did have just two comments on that. It looks like we have hoarded the testing sites, which is very good. And I know this is kind of good, I think, going back. Kim, Ms. Mayor Rego, Lauren, do you know how many Revere residents have been tested this year? At the, the COVID sites? Do we have that number?
Off the top of my head, I don't. We definitely have it somewhere. And if you give me maybe a few minutes, I could probably dig it up. But I, but let me, let me get back to you and I could probably get back to you before the end of the meeting.
Sure, thanks. And then one other thing, and this might be more for Lauren or Kim. Because I, there's, I know that even through the state, I've gotten some really, I guess, responses have been very difficult. When someone tests positive, as you know, someone tests positive, it's very hard for them to draw a negative for a while. And I know that a lot of times it's a requirement to return to work or whatever it may be. And even the doctors are saying, you know, listen, you can go back to work as long as you're symptom-free after a certain period of time. But a lot of people do and have tested negative, a positive two or three times. Co-workers of mine, friends of mine. So what I was curious is, is in the data that we collect, do they, when they, when the city or the state says that we had, you know, 10 or 20 or 30 or whatever, however many cases a day, are they able to differentiate when someone tests positive, the same person tests positive two or three times? And does that go into the data? Because that can obviously skew the data, correct?
I don't believe that it does. I think it does skew the data. So I do agree with you. Somebody is positive and they test on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And Monday, Wednesday, Friday is a positive. It's going to come up with that.
Yeah, so I, I think that's important for people to understand because, and maybe just to spread the knowledge to the residents of Revere. If you test positive, don't try to go get another test and think a negative is going to get you to go do whatever you're supposed to do. The positive reading, you can't, you know, I think a doctor told one of my coworkers, you can have a, you can't, you can't have a false negative, but you can have a false, you can't have a false positive, but you can have a false negative. In essence, we're always going to err on the side of caution.
Yeah.
And we're not recommending people go get retested after they are positive at this point to get a negative. That was something that was happening early on when we really didn't have an understanding of it. But now the regulations in, in, in what we are giving for recommendations are no longer that. So, you know, once, once you are positive, it's a 14-day quarantine. If you're symptomatic, it's three days after, you know, we're not asking you to retest. And we're also recommending that businesses, you know, and places of work are not asking for that. But it takes time for people to catch up to that recommendation. So, Lauren, I don't know if you, you, I'm sure you have.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, Kim's exactly right. You, you're exactly right in what you're saying. We don't recommend retesting. We do a time and symptom-based isolation if you do test positive for COVID. So it's, and, and I think, again, employers, I think there's some, some fear associated with having someone come back to work and not have a negative test to provide. But this is science-based and this is, you know, the, the recommendations of not retesting again are because from the data that we have now, we really are able to determine the infectious period. And that's what our isolation guidelines are based around. Because you're exactly right, the PCR test is very good at picking up virus if it's in you. And it can pick it up for a very, very long time after you are no longer infectious. And it can cause a lot of fear. It can cause a lot of miscommunication. It can cause a lot of, you know, a lot of mistrust if, if we get that out there. So every, every time we talk to, to people who are saying to us, our employer is asking for a negative test, you know, I, I ask to talk to the employer and say, let me, let me talk to them and make sure that they understand that we're not, we're not advising that anymore. And you're right, it's all, it's all about getting the understanding out there to the public that the recommendations we have for isolation, if you test positive and quarantine, if you're a close contact, are science-based. There's risks associated with each one of those, but the risks are negligible, are, are, they are factored in when we make these decisions about the length of time of isolation and quarantine. But you're exactly right. That, that's, yeah.
And I, I think it's just important, we have a few people that wish to ask on this as well. But I think it's just important to make sure people know because that can really, that can really skew the numbers. And obviously, you know, not that we, we want to have honest numbers, we want to make sure that we're representing the city well.
I, I think currently, Council Akif, that, you know, through our recommendation, we're not really seeing the retesting as much as we had seen in the previous.
Right. Thank you. Sue Gravellisi?
Thank you, Council Akif. I have this question is actually maybe for the mayor to answer or Lauren regarding the number of Revere residents that have been tested. I know you're going to get that data for us. But my question is, if Revere residents have been tested multiple times and received a negative test, will they be, you know, just singled out as a single one person? Or every time they test, it might be added into the pool of a Revere resident being tested?
That's a great question, Ms. Gravellisi, and one that as I get the, the numbers of, of total cases, total testing numbers, what I have, what we have as a city right now is the total number of Revere residents that have been tested. That's not a unique number, not the unique number of people that have been tested, but just a, a, a gross number. And that gross number is 76,385 tests of Revere residents. So, you know, obviously, I've been tested a lot.
Myself, too.
I, I count for probably 10 or 15 of those. But, but, you know, we don't have the, we don't have that unique number, but we do have the total number of tests that have been, that have been done for Revere residents. And, and that number is 76,000 tests. So.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's great.
Because like, like yourself, I've been tested, I believe, eight times already. And just about everyone in my family goes, tries to go on a weekly basis just to keep my parents safe, just in case we're asymptomatic. So I was just curious about that, but thank you.
Thank you.
And that's our recommendation.
I try to follow the recommendations, Kim. Thank you.
I know.
Thank you, Susan. We have Council McKenna and Councilor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for Lauren and Kim, if, if you know this. Do we have a choice on what vaccine we can get, either the Pfizer or the Moderna?
Uh, great question. Um, it's hard for me to answer that one. Eventually, I think we will get to the point where there are multiple options to pick from. I don't think, and, and again, this is based on nothing more than just me, you know, having many, many, being in a lot of the conversations with the state. I don't think in the beginning, there will be a choice. But I, I don't, I can't speak on that with, with a lot of certainty.
Fair enough. Thank you, Council Visconti. And then Representative Elect Janino after that.
Thank you, Mr. President. The question is to Lauren. I know we were talking about the time for quarantining. And has that time, I know there was some information or data going out there that it has been reduced. Is that in fact true or is that fake news? I don't know. And I, I think there's some confusion about that as well.
Yes. Um, there have been a lot of changes to quarantine guidelines. Isolation, and I just want to remind everyone of the difference. Isolation guidelines are, are different than quarantine guidelines. You are isolating if you are positive, if you are COVID positive. And, and those guidelines have been pretty steady for quite a long time. And that's, again, the time and symptom guidance we use, a time-based approach. If you're asymptomatic, your, your 10 days, you're coming out on day 11. If you're, if you do have symptoms, we're watching for, you know, has your fever gone away? Has your symptoms gone away? And, and we do a symptom-based approach there. The quarantine guidelines have changed a lot over the last couple of weeks. For many, from, for many different reasons, but really it's to try to help make quarantine, it's to help make it doable for people and, and to give incentive to, to, to stay in when we're asking them to stay in. There is a 14-day incubation period for the virus after you've been exposed. And that really, that data hasn't changed. And so 14 days is a, is a, is a reference point we can always use in certain populations. If people can't tell us if they're experiencing symptoms, if there's no availability for testing or if anyone's in a, necessarily in a high-risk kind of situation. The incubation period hasn't necessarily changed. For a while, we were using a 10-day quarantine with a set test on day seven. And then the CDC came out a couple of weeks ago with even newer guidance that states if you have testing available in your area, which, you know, in Revere we do, you can do a seven-day quarantine coming out on day eight with a negative test on day five. If you don't have testing near you or available to you, you can do a 10-day quarantine coming out on day 11. And this is kind of what I was alluding to earlier when I said the levels of increased risk that are acceptable associated with a shorter quarantine. And the data that we have shows that most people who are exposed to COVID are going to become positive within that amount of time, within that shortened amount of time. You know, that seven-ish day window. There's only a very few amount of people who are negative, 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 day one, day two, day three, day four, day up to the day seven, and then convert to positive on day 11, day 14. There's a very small amount of those people. So by shortening the window, it's, it's kind of a trade-off, right? We need people to quarantine. We need them to be able to do it. We need to make it as, as, we need to make it as manageable as possible. So we, we add a little tiny bit of risk on to the end. I think it's a 5% increase risk with the seven-day, with the shortened quarantine. And, and, you know, the CDC is okay with that very small amount of increased risk if we can get everyone to comply with the shorter quarantine. The one caveat here to all of these guidelines, I'd say, is that there's always that reviewing internally of your own symptoms. So if you do become symptomatic at any point over these, these days, your guidelines really change. And if you, if you become symptomatic even in the, in the week after your quarantine has technically ended, but you're still within that 14-day incubation period, of course, then that's a, that's a prompt to go get tested and to, to quarantine immediately. So there's always that caveat of, you know, you, you have to continue to monitor symptoms. But the, the short answer to your question is yes, the guidelines have changed a lot. It doesn't mean that, that we don't know what we're doing. Science changes all the time and it's always a risk-benefit analysis when we're making guidelines like this. And so they've been shortened with some caveats in place.
Thank you. Thank you. And last, Council Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Council Visconti actually asked the question that I was going to ask. So great minds think alike, Councilor. But I will just say, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and your, your team for, you know, coordinating this meeting. I do think it was important, you know, I know when this first started, we had a joint meeting. And, you know, it's been several months now, so I am glad that we reconnected and, and I'm glad. Thank you for everyone that was involved and thank you, Jerry, for asking my question. Have a great night.
Well, thank, thank you, Representative Elect. And I, I will close that piece and we're going to move on to the next piece. And again, it's going to, this one will be relative to the school openings. If I can just preface that with a few just brief comments. One is, the reason that we're meeting as a community of the whole, committee of the whole is, is because these are really relative and pertinent topics. And obviously, there's lots of unbelievable information that is being given to us by some health officials and mayor and the entire team. So I really thank the school committee and the city staff and superintendent and the residents and of course, the council for coming together and having these important discussions. You know, no one, you know, there's a lot of different, different ideas and there's a lot of different, you know, thoughts. But, you know, I think when we have a collaboration, we can. But, you know, I think when we have a collaboration, we can, we can kind of understand where everyone's coming from. When in talking about the reopening of the schools, I did want to make make a personal comment. And because obviously, this this matter is personal to me. I do have children in the school. But I didn't want to, I did want to preface that also with, this doesn't go in spite of the fact that I know for a hundred percent certain that everyone on the school committee, especially the superintendent and all of the faculty, the teachers, have done an unbelievable job thus far. And they've worked tremendously, unbelievably hard. So I don't want to take, I don't want my comments to take away from any of that. And I know that some people may not agree with what I have to say. I want to remind everybody on this and everyone out there watching that I'm a parent and I'm a parent first. So I'm a city counselor, but my day job is is a parent. And and as you all know, education is very important. And I believe education is essential to our children. But as a parent, I'm frustrated at where currently, where we currently stand for eight months, as you could probably understand. And I feel helpless. I'm personally watching my children deteriorate. Just imagine how the other eight thousand families in Revere fail. This is why I believe it's imperative that we make some corrective action in how we are attempting to get children back into school. For decades, we've touted our schools as a safe haven for the youth of our city. We often talk about them being the only lifeline for our students, especially those coming from at-risk households or those who need special education. Sometimes it's the only eight hours of warmth, food, adult guidance, or care that happens inside of those buildings. As for the educational standards, we've stressed the discipline in the amount of schooling days, specific and rigid curriculum, testing deadlines, even the minimum amount of hours for a student to get a proper education. That has all been fully mapped out for many years. This has been the city's gold standard at preaching preaching ground for years. Also seeking more and more funding, which has always been granted. On March twelve, that all went away. That changed when we closed the doors to everyone. And I agree, at the time, it was the right decision to step back and reflect, plan a forward, plan a path forward. But to fast-forward eight-plus months and to continue to even be unable to consider the concept of going back into these former safe havens, it's not acceptable. And it goes against everything these schools have stood for. The decisions and agreements cannot begin with why we can't. Rather, it should begin with how can we accomplish this? This is not a slight, again, to any of the efforts of the administration, faculty that goes out there and has, you know, online learning has been very difficult for many, especially the teachers that have had it planned on the fly. So I I I feel your pain. Students are dropping out, transferring out, and zoning out at an alarming pace. This is scary. We are, we are failing them in altering their lives in ways that they may have never be able to recover from. Depression, poor choices, missed opportunities. We all know it just takes one wrong turn in these pivotal lives. I don't want to create a suggestion that there's one group to cause for this great resistance in getting back into at least partial in-person learning. However, it's quite clear by the many closely involved that this is the answer. I know we're not going to discuss agreements at this meeting. But I think during a pandemic, we would hold the development and future of our children to hold the development and future of our children as a bargaining chip is reprehensible. And the silence around it is deafening. I recall less than a year ago, we had a group of teachers requesting our support in the city council, requesting help. We listened, we showed great respect, and we gave them our support. Now I'm asking for for your support. I'm asking for that to turn around. Remember why you became an educator and do what's right. For I feel anything less is becoming a violation of our children's basic rights. And given the city's ethnicity and makeup, I feel it's a violation of the human rights. The poorer, more diverse community is being given much of a less of an opportunity to succeed than those that have that are more affluent, less diverse, and of course, are more white. Good education should not be a matter of classification. Our children, even in these unbelievable times, deserve much, much more. Thank you. Anyone has anything to comment on that? In the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I'll I'll start by thanking you for sharing your perspective and your, I think your frustration certainly comes through. And the level of anxiety and the the challenges that come along with remote learning certainly come through the screen and and I just appreciate the fact that you would, you know, take the time to to express those feelings as a as a parent at first. And I know that's the most important job that we have. And your your perspective is one that I value. And and I certainly understand the the frustration that you have. And and I say that in hopes that you understand that 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 your frustration is shared by by many, myself and and I would say the school committee.
And all of us.
As well, right, right. And and so, you know, I I'm not going to, including the superintendent. So, you know, I we talked about this earlier this week and and it's a challenging time and and one that's providing a lot of, a lot of anxiety and a lot of real challenges for family life, for our residents, for the health and and well-being of of our our residents and the the mental health of our residents. So, you know, I I just, I I wanted to say that I I appreciate the 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 fact that you would be willing to share that because as a, as a school committee member, and I'll say this as a as chair of the school committee, we haven't heard we haven't heard that level of frustration from parents directly. And and I say that in 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 terms of our meetings, in terms of being on Zoom and hearing from folks. I know I I've heard certainly from a lot of upset parents, but as a collection of the leadership of this community and in a public forum, we haven't heard, we haven't heard your your story, story, the way that you've just shared it. So that's why I I again, want to, I want to thank you. And and I'll say that nobody's happy about the situation that we're in, that we find ourselves as a community, as a school district. And it's one that we want to get out of as quickly as possible. And I know, I know you understand that there are, there are a lot of things that go into that. And there are a lot of things that maybe we can't even really want to, we can't get into the details of that in in a public forum. And you mentioned agreements and and, you know, we do have agreements that, you know, I'm not going to kind of dive into, but I I just want, I want you to know that your frustration is shared with with the committee. And it, and and the frustration that I'll say that every family has in our, in our, our community. You know, and I think it's really important and I, again, you know, thank you for for being willing to step up and 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 say those because I know it's not probably the most popular thing to say as well. And and asking for for support from from people who have asked for your support in the past is something that I think really hit home and and, you know, I'll I'll leave it to other members if they want to, if they want to chime in or if the superintendent wants to speak at all. But I just wanted to, again, show my appreciation for your, for your comments.
Well, thank you. And and I I know there's a number of, a couple of councils and then Superintendent Kelly, which is speakers, a few others. So by by all, no means, I'm not an idiot. I mean, we're talking about high numbers, some of the highest that we've ever experienced. So maybe not the best time to talk about it today. But as you, as you probably know, I have, I've shared some of my comments to you personally, maybe not out in the public like this, and certainly with Superintendent Kelly and some of the other members of the community. So I just, I I just have to be able to say what, you know, respectfully what is on my mind because that's why I'm here. And again, I'm friends with, I'm I'm so many people that work in the school system. We're doing the code drives and food drives and employee drives right now, all working with community people from those schools because I love them. And I, you know, you know, you know, how many kids that I I'm involved with, with coaching and and just, they mean so much to me. So to see them so hurt, it it definitely hurts me. But again, I I, that doesn't mean that that has to happen tomorrow. But I think that the agreement, not the agreement, I think the conversation and the reality and just the not, we need to stop with the nonsense behind, you know, just, I I know it's a pandemic. I'm not stupid. And I think everyone on this call is very bright. And I think everyone that's, but let's just not hide behind, you know, the hypocrisy of it all. When we see these people out there traveling and enjoying all these sorts of things in lives and then want to pretend that they don't want to be in front of our dirty little children, that's not acceptable. So I'll leave that down. I don't want to get too, I don't want to get too, I don't want to get disrespectful because I have a ton of respect for people. But I want to give people an opportunity to speak and let you know that, yes, the overwhelming majority of parents in the city, in your city, our city would like to have more of that discussion. And they they probably feel a lot more like me than 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 you're seeing right here. So Counselor, actually, you know, if if it's okay, I'll open up to Superintendent Kelly and then go to Counselors Zambuto and and Denver.
Sure, if I could for just a couple of minutes. You know, I I feel also, Patrick, for for what you're saying. And I will say that I have had a number of parents reach out who feel the same way that you do and a number of teachers who have reached out and are really desperate to get back to the classroom and and have some in-person instruction with their children, with their students. And what I've told everybody who has contacted me, and I will say that I've of course, heard from parents and teachers who are on the exact opposite end of the spectrum opinion-wise. But what I've said to everybody, and you and I had a conversation about this a few weeks ago, is that I think the most responsible thing that we can do in the school committee has been in agreement with this, is follow the guidelines from our medical professionals and from the Department of Education, the CDC, the Department of Public Health, and all of those more-knowing groups. Because I, although I've learned a heck of a lot more about this infection, about vaccines, about ventilation systems, and a whole lot of other things that I wish I never had the opportunity to learn about, I am not an expert in any of them. And so we all need to rely on the people who are. And I'll go back to the question that Counselor Morabito asked earlier around our positivity rates and our infection rate and, you know, where those numbers came from. So it's true that we have agreements with some of our bargaining units that we would come back to a hybrid learning model when the positivity rate in Revere was below five percent and when there were fewer than eight cases per one hundred thousand in the city of Revere. But those were not contrived numbers. As the mayor mentioned earlier, those were numbers that we got from the CDC and from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. And they are still the metrics that determine when a community is identified as red. What has changed in recent months is the state has come to realize that there are degrees of redness. And at the beginning of November, I think it was November sixth, I forget, I shared this information on the school committee meeting on Wednesday. And I know, Counselor Keith, that you were there, so I'm sure this is repetitive to you, but might not be to some who are listening. And on November sixth, the Department of Education and the governor's office spoke publicly and made a strong push for students to get back to schools and for schools to not automatically close when their community was identified as red. And when they gave that announcement, they talked about these degrees of redness. And what they said at the time was there are some districts where there is just too much COVID to really think about safe in-person learning. And at the time, they named Chelsea, Revere, and Lawrence. And they have since added Lynn, just those four communities, to that list. And so while the governor and the Department of Education are pushing strongly for in-person learning, they acknowledge that we are so red and the data that the mayor shared earlier and the conversation and information that Lauren and Kim have shared with us support that. They, the schools are a microcosm of the community. And so what we see happening in the community is what we can expect to happen when we have large populations of people in our schools. And because our kids are more at risk, that is a greater challenge. And it's a greater challenge for the families that they go home to every day. So while we have memorandums of agreement that cite those numbers, the numbers are based on science. And our priority, as a, as the mayor already already mentioned, is to focus on our special needs kids because those are the kids who really cannot learn in a remote environment. That what their their learning does not translate over a computer screen the way it does for most kids. And I'll acknowledge that even for most kids, this is a struggle. It's not what they used to. They've lost their socialization. Every student I talk to says, I just want to be back with my friends. And the older kids say, I want to have a prom, and I want to have graduation, and I want to have all of those rites of passage. And, you know, we really thought last July that the class of twenty nineteen was the only one who was going to suffer that way. None of us expected, even in July, when we made the decision that we needed to open the schools in a full remote model, that this is where we would be in November or December. We thought that by November, we would be back to hybrid. And the numbers just didn't go in the direction that we wanted them to. And we have to deal with that reality. And I know that you get all of this. We are in a position where we can not make very many people entirely happy. And we are in a position where it's, it's really hard to address the individual needs of eight thousand different kids who all have very different needs. And we are trying our best, and I have to give credit to the group of over a hundred teachers, parents, students, community members, and administrators who came together to build our schedules over the summer. Because some of the things they did in those schedules was really think about what is an appropriate time for a student to be engaged in synchronous learning, where they're actually on live with their teacher? And what are some things that we need to put in place to ensure that teachers can pivot to this entirely different world when they were never trained for and still do it effectively? And so they built common planning time in or professional learning group time in for every teacher every day so that they can work together and co-plan and focus what the curriculum should be and really talk about what effective instruction looks like and share those ideas with each other so that they're not living on islands the way teachers historically have, where they enter their own classroom, shut the door, teach their kids, and, you know, that's kind of it. They also built time into the schedule to make sure that teachers could have a dedicated amount of time every day to communicate with families and parents. And that happens at the end of every day. It's why the kids' day ends a little bit earlier than it did before we went remote so that teachers can spend some time making those phone calls, connecting with the families, trying to connect families who need them to the different social service programs that are available. And where necessary, connect families with social workers and guidance counselors so that they can support the social emotional learning needs of individual students who are struggling. And, you know, one of our biggest challenges has been really making sure that those connections are tight. And we finished a parent survey just last week, which we'll be sharing at Tuesday's school committee meeting. We are still crunching that data. But I can tell you that on first look, over thirty-one hundred parents responded to that survey. And, you know, we have eight thousand kids in the district, but it's about five thousand families. So that's a really great return rate from five thousand families for them to respond, for over thirty-one hundred to respond. And in large part, it's roughly eighty to eighty-five percent of families are satisfied or extremely satisfied with the amount of synchronous work, the amount of asynchronous work, and the amount of work in general, homework, for example, that kids are getting on a daily basis. Where they've indicated that we have some work to do is on that communication piece. And that's data that the principals are going, have now in their hands and are going to be working with their staff to really make sure that we're capitalizing on that time that we embedded in the school day. And and really having those one-on-one conversations with families. You know, I almost think of it like the contract tracing that the nurses are doing through Lauren's office, where they get on the phone and really talk to somebody and really spend the time. um, through Lauren's office, uh, where they get on the phone and really talk to somebody and really spend the time, what's going on, what do you need, how can we help? I had a contact from a reporter with the Boston Globe today who had spoken to a single mom in Revere who was struggling to get to her child's school during the food pickup window. Because she has to bring the child with her, can't leave her alone, young child, um, doesn't have a vehicle, and, um, the timing of the window doesn't coincide well with the time that the child is in class. And, you know, I haven't heard from the mother as far as I know, I don't know if this mother reached out to the principal, but we have a number of parents who find themselves in, in, in that position, and we make accommodations for them, we arrange for later pickups of the food, we're not saying you can't have it, we want to find a way to solve all of the problems that we can. Um, but we need to know about them, and part of that is on us to really make those connections with families. And that, I can tell you, is going to be a strong focus of our work going forward, but I do think the bottom line is that we really do have to pay attention to the medical experts around us and really heed their advice uh, around when it's safe for us to return large numbers of kids to the classroom. I do think it's a, it's a different story, and we should be thinking differently about what we can do for small groups of highly at-risk kids. Um, and then, you know, just to circle back to the, the levels of red kind of thing, um, I know that I've talked to several parents, this seems to be a particular issue around winter athletics, and, uh, our hope is still, um, that we can figure out a way to have winter athletics along with fall athletics during the MIAA Bridge some, I'm going to say semester, I know that's the wrong term, but Bridge season. Um, that's not a definite. And I know that some communities around us are making decisions different than that, who are also red. And I'll use Malden as an example. Uh, Malden has an agreement that, um, pending their return to school in a hybrid model on January eleventh, um, that they will begin their athletic season on that day and do the requisite ten days of, uh, physical fitness and training prior to starting actual games on, uh, January twenty-second. Malden is a red city whose average daily positivity rate, and this, I'm gonna, I did not look at their data yesterday, the new data that came out, so I'm going to refer back to last week's data. Their average daily rate was thirty-five when ours was sixty-seven, and their positivity rate was five point zero nine when ours was at eight percent. Those are very different scenarios, and there are very different things to think about in terms of the safety of kids having, engaging in indoor athletic competitions, um, at this particular time. And so that's, that's why you're going to see different kinds of decisions. The other one I'll call out is Everett, which has very similar positivity rates to the city of Revere, and still they made a decision, um, I don't know the exact specifics, but I believe they're going to start athletics either soon or after the new year as well. And, you know, that is their prerogative, um, to make that decision. As far as I know, um, it, it might be a different decision than what the public health commissions would say to do. Um, it's different than what the MIAA recommends, and it's different than what the Department of Education recommends, I know that for sure. Um, I can't speak to their decision-making, uh, or what process they use in determining that. I do know that they already have their special needs kids in school, and, you know, that might be part of their decision-making, uh, as well. Um, every community is somewhat different, and, uh, in this pandemic, just like families are making difficult decisions, and, and communities are making difficult decisions, school departments are making difficult decisions, and, uh, we, we do that knowing that we're not going to make everybody happy, but really trying to follow the guidelines of the experts around us, and, and really adhere to what they're telling us is the safest thing for our kids and for our employees, but for our kids, for ours.
Thank you, thank you very much for that time.
Through you, Mr. President, through you.
Counselor Zambu, pardon me?
Through you, Mr. President, can I just, um, Dr. Kelly, I just want to thank you, the mayor, um, school um, students, administrators, um, teachers, and most importantly, parents, um. You know, I understand, uh, remote learning, um, does not fulfill the educational needs um, of students, especially those who need educational special needs. Um, but what we're experiencing is a anomaly, and I think it's very important, when you pointed out, that we're basically the poster child in
From you, Counselor.
Am I not, I did it once more, can you believe this? So anyways, let me just say tha-
Oh, you just did it again?
Did it again. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, thank you to the mayor, uh, school committee members, school administrators, students, parents, um, and teachers, um, what we're experiencing in is an anomaly, you know? And I think it's very important that when Dr. Kelly showed that we're, we're basically the poster child for a red city in the Commonwealth, which is not good, and I think it's very important, um, when parents look at this information to say, we, we are, everything, I understand everyone wants to go back to normalcy, have some structure in our life, but at the same time, when you're looking at the whole situation, if you ask yourself, measuring public health versus, um, education needs, at the end of the day, health trumps everything. You, you're not going to be able to give your child an education, God forbid, if they get sick and pass away. So, and you hate to look at that and look at the seriousness of this, and I understand, uh, they say, um, the effects aren't as bad in the school, but we don't know this. Like I said, it's an anomaly, with, this is a first experience for us. Sure, they know as much as they knew, they know more than what they, um, just, than, they know more now than what they did, said in March, but we have to keep in mind that this is a first for all of us, we've never experienced like that. So I, my hat goes off to the whole school administration, the mayor, um, this is an issue that, um, you're dealing with people's lives, and at the end of the day, we have to remember that. Um, it's very important, thank you for the lead.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you very much, and Counselor Zambuto.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I want to thank you for putting on this meeting, it's been very informative to me. Uh, I learnt a lot of things I, uh, really didn't know. Um, I will say that, uh, your, your, your spiel on your kids and, and, and and so forth was touching, but I, I will say that I've also heard that from many parents with the same passion, and, and I will say with a lot more anger, and, and I, I don't have an answer, and, and, and I know how difficult this is for everybody, from the mayor to the superintendent, to the teachers, to try to make this work for the kids, and, and unfortunately, uh, kids are going to be hurt by this, there is no getting around it, it's nobody's fault. This, this damn disease is, is ruining, uh, you know, the development of our children, and, and there's no way around it, and uh, like, uh, like everybody said, we're in a tough position because we're, we're one of the hottest of the hotspots, and, and there's many reasons for that, and, and, and I, I, I just will say, I hope that we completely stick to the science, and, and, uh, especially for shutdowns and things like ru- restaurants and stuff. I've watched over the, over the, uh, the country, how some, uh, governors and et cetera are overreaching and, and, and not acting on science, and, uh, like, things like outdoor dining and stuff like that, that, and, and they're shutting that down when it's, it's not in line with the science. I just hope we stick to the science here, and uh, I, I appreciate all the efforts of, of everybody here, and, uh, we're just in a tough situation, and we got to get through it. So thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Counselor, uh, and, uh, Mr. City of Dambrojo, and then Counselor McKenna. And then we have a few, and if there's other councils, then we have some attendees that wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to share firstly that I, and I think everyone here shares your belief that we want to be back in person and back to normal. But in times like this, it's more important than ever to realize what the true enemy is. As you mentioned, it's certainly not working parents who are worried about putting meals on their tables and educating their kids simultaneously, which is an incredibly difficult prospect. It's also certainly not teachers who, as always, are working tons of overtime hours, pouring their own resources into their profession, are understaffed and are under-resourced. It's not the operational staff of the schools who are maintaining the buildings and ensuring that everything works. The enemy is obviously the virus, and it takes principled and measured steps to defeat it. And in those steps, as we take them as a community, um, in attempt to return back to normal, we need to be safe, and we need to follow the guidelines that medical professionals have put forth, and there are a lot of guidelines. That's the only way that we can get on a path back to normal, especially with the prospect of vaccination creeping up on us within a few months. Growing pains in the process are to be expected, and we need to do a better job communicating as a city, in a school district. We need to make ourselves more accessible to parents, to teachers, and to all of our employees. And we need to recognize the pain and struggle that exists there, because it's tremendous, and pain and struggle like the one that, you know, which you've outlined, that you've gone through in your own family, um, needs to be appreciated. But if we are to follow these steps, and we are to follow the medical guidance, we will be in a better situation over the course of the next few months. And I'm sure that, you know, the days ahead will be much brighter if we're able to stay on that path. So thank you again, thanks for calling this meeting.
Thank you, Ca- uh, thank you, Mr. Dambrojo. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions, one for Diane and one for, uh, the mayor, Mayor Rego. Uh, since Mayor Rego, I, I hope you can hear me, but, um, Diane, this question's for you first, do you have any data for the kids that have not returned to Revere Public Schools of the dropout, uh, the dropout rate before, uh, cor- uh, coronavirus started? Do you have any of that data?
Yeah, I can tell you, I can tell you that our enrollment numbers right now are two hundred and fifty less than what they were a year ago. Um, some of that is a difference between graduating seniors and a much lower enrollment at the early childhood and kindergarten level than we typically would have. Uh, large numbers of families opted not to enroll their kids in kindergarten or early childhood this year because of the pandemic. Um, we have exactly four kids that we've not been able to locate, um, and from, who were enrolled prior to the pandemic, um, and to today. All of the other kids, and some of them have left the district, but we've located them, and we know where they are, and we know that they're in school or, um, or whatever the case may be. Um, we have a number of kids that are not fully engaging with their academic work. We've decreased the number significantly in, uh, in early Sept- uh, really like mid to late September, when we first uh, came back to academic learning, we had five hundred and eleven kids on that list of kids who are not engaging, uh, and that number is now reduced to under two hundred. Um, and that's a result of the teachers and the social workers and the principals taking the time to connect with those families and really work with them to try to get them engaged, and give the kids whatever it is they needed that was preventing them uh, from engaging in the first place. Uh, in some cases, that was, um, a lack of technology or, uh, no internet at home. Um, we got those things sorted out. Uh, we were short a number of Chromebooks when school first started, uh, we received them at the end of September, and um, every child has one now, we're, we're starting to struggle a little bit with, uh, breakages and having to replace, um, broken devices. Yeah, but we're still working on that and, um, trying to help families as much as we can with those pieces as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And my second question is for, uh, Mayor Rego. Um, Mayor Rego, you there?
I'm here.
Hi, so, um, some of the concerns that I've been talking to a, a lot of teachers, and, uh, some of the concerns is the poor quality of the ventilation in some of the schools. I think it's Beachmont, Garfield, and maybe some of, uh, the high school, I'm not really sure if that's uh, true fact, but, um, can you use any of that emergency COVID, uh, uh, virus fund to update the, uh, ventilation in these, uh, three schools?
That's a, that's a great question, and I know, Dr. Kelly, I'm sure will want to, will want to jump in. One thing that I will say, um, in terms of CARES Act money that the city received, uh, is that there was a limit on um, on capital projects, right? So, um, what, how, how money could be spent to improve a building was limited to, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, when we talk about a full ventilation system upgrade, or some of the work that, that, uh, Dr. Kelly is going to outline, I think, in the Beachmont and Garfield and the high school, um, we couldn't just say, okay, we're going to throw a million dollars at improving the ventilation systems of, in our schools. Unfortunately, there were some, uh, restrictions on that, on that CARES Act money, um, and one of them was around, uh, specifically around building improvements and capital improvements, and they limited that to a certain amount, which really, I mean, we, we, we did things like put up the physical barriers, uh, in the council chamber, and we did some physical barrier work in, in some of our bill, uh, in some of our offices. We couldn't do a full, um, you know, upgrade even in city hall of, of ventilation systems or things like that, so, uh, we didn't have the, the ability to do that, but I know Dr. Kelly is going to probably talk a little bit about what they, what we were able to do and, and some of the, um, the money that, that the school district received in, um, in CARES Act to, to be able to, to do some of that work.
Okay. And, uh, so I'll just say that, you know, um, Carl Svensson and his team have been absolutely unbelievable in the work that they've been doing in all of our school buildings. The entire maintenance and, uh, facilities team, the custodians, all of them, um, have done incredible work, but, um, we did immediately, uh, last summer, um, contract with an outside provider to come in and inspect all of the ventilation systems in all of our school buildings to make sure, um, that they were safe and operable and doing what we needed them to do. Um, when we did that first round of testing, um, the results showed problems at the Beachmont, the Garfield, and the high school. When we investigated those problems, uh, especially at the Beachmont and the Garfield, um, we discovered that they weren't actually problems, that the way the testing, uh, was set up, given how those systems operate, prevented them from actually doing an air intake measure. Um, so Carl talked about this extensively at several school committee meetings, and I would hope at this point that all of the teachers understand exactly what's happening with those ventilation systems. Um, but the Beachmont and the Garfield are perfectly fine. Um, and, you know, one of the things that, when we initially thought that there was a problem with those ventilation systems, um, one of the things that the experts were telling us to do was open a window. If there's a problem with ventilation, open a window, that's what lets fresh air into the room. And that's what you want to do, is have fresh air exchanges, uh, in any room that you're in, that's true for your house too, by the way. Um, and so we quickly set to work making sure that the windows, uh, were operable, because that was a problem at the Beachmont, Joey, and I think you know this well, that, uh, many years ago, Massport played for the Beachmont School to get those, um, noise-canceling windows that, um, reduce the sound from the outside, given the air flight paths, airplane flight paths. Um, which was great, I'm sure, when they first went in and worked well, um, but over the years, uh, they've lost their efficacy, and the, and Massport no longer has that program to help fund the replacement of those windows. And, um, so where we were at the Beachmont for the last several years is, if you lifted a sill, um, the supports in the wall were no longer functioning, and when you let go, it, it had the likelihood to slam down. And especially if a child were near that situation, we were worried about the safety. So, uh, where windows like that didn't operate well, um, they were made unopenable, so that that wouldn't happen. Um, and so when we thought there was a problem with the ventilation system, uh, Carl and his team actually, we were like, what are we going to do? We can't replace all of these windows in six weeks' time. We don't have the money to do it, first of all, and we wouldn't be able to get it done in that kind of timeframe anyway. And again, then, we were still thinking that we were coming back to school, this was late July, early August. Um, so they devised a cut-around where they created, uh, not created, but bought, like, you know, the shower, the window you might have in your shower, that's a little bit smaller and one side the window you might have in your shower that's a little bit smaller and one side slides over? They, they bought those and fit them, opened the window, fit them in, and built around, built a casing around them to keep it airtight, so the teachers at least would have a mechanism to open and close a window. After that, we learned that we could make adjustments to the univentilators in the rooms that would give us the airflow that we needed with a MERV-13 filter, and we don't even need to use, keep the, keep the windows open. Some teachers still choose to. We have teachers in other buildings that never had a problem with their ventilation system that were opening windows. I think there was some misinformation out there at the beginning of the year. I know that we had, I can think of two situations, one at the Lincoln and one at the Hill School, where teachers were saying, I'm freezing with all these open, open windows. And we were saying, well, why are your windows open? You don't need them to be open. So, anyway, like everything else, COVID has been a mess of changing information and constantly trying to update with better information as soon as we get it. And, and that's basically where we are with the Beauchamp and the Garfield. The high school still has an issue. There, so in all three of those buildings, the ventilation systems were designed to favor temperature control instead of outside air intake. And that's what made them not do what we wanted them to do because in a virus environment, like with COVID, you want to maximize the outside air coming in so that you have those air exchanges basically cleaning the air that everybody's breathing. And that really hasn't been an issue for us because we don't have large numbers of people in our classrooms. We only have the teacher. But it was a concern for us when we thought we were going to have a teacher with 12 students and maybe a paraprofessional or a student teacher or, or somebody else. If that were the case, then we would be, then at that time, we would have been worried. We were never worried to have just a single person in a room. But the, you know, talk went out there that people should be worried about that. At the high school, even when they made the same adjustments to the univentilators, they were not able to override the system enough to bring in the number of air exchanges per hour that we would want when we have kids back in the classroom. So there, in addition to the MERV-13 filters and the univents, we have purchased and we did use our coronavirus relief funding to do this. We've purchased air purifiers for every classroom and office in that building. We actually worked with the city through a grant that L. Baker was coordinating in order to procure those. It's actually still like in the middle of the bid process. But we understand that the units are on hand and should be delivered by the end of this month.
Just a point of information that Massport has restate, it's reinstating the window program, but you have to be qualified for a certain date. So if you were the first ones to get the windows, say Beauchamp was the first ones to get the windows, I don't know what the date is. I don't know if it's 1988 or 1990, then you are eligible to get new windows. So I would look into that just because I know the Beauchamp's going to be around for a while. And if you can get new windows for the school, then, and I'll help you try to find that information. But I know they are reinstating, I think it was Congressman Clock who just, she, she just passed something in legislation. So they are going to reinstate. So, yeah, so we should look into that for the Beauchamp School and see if, if the Beauchamp Schools qualified to get new windows.
Absolutely. Any information, send it my way and we'll get right on it.
All right.
Thank you, Superintendent. Counselor Serena wants to go, and then I want to open up to some of the attendees. Give them some, some speaking time. Counselor Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm not a parent of children in the school system. I'm a city counselor. I'm not on the school committee. I, I don't, you know, my background is not Revere Public Schools. But I just want to say, you know, we are in a very unique situation. And, you know, I know kids, human beings, we're not, we're not meant to be behind a screen like we are right now, you know, for, for many hours a day and no human interaction. I, I can see your frustrations for not, you know, for, for having kids not in school. But the science and the decisions that are being made by Superintendent Kelly and our school committee, I, I feel are the necessary ones at this point. Dr. Kelly is one of the most respected superintendents in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I truly, you know, I, I, I know she wants the kids to be back in school. We all want, we all want life to be normal again. But we're, we're not there and especially not in Revere. We're not there right now. So I just want to say that I, you know, thank you, Dr. Kelly, and thank you to the school committee. I know you guys are really looking into this and, and you guys are on the front lines with the teachers, with parents, and I, I know parents are frustrated. And, but like I said, this is, this is unprecedented, and we all need to take a step back and, and realize that. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. And I, and I, like I said, and I know, well, Jerry, Council of Wisconsin, speak, and then we'd like to go to some of the attendees. Council of Wisconsin.
You, you, you. I'm, I'm muted.
Term of the year, term of the year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, I too want to thank the school committee, Dr. Kelly, the teachers and staff, and thank the students for all the work that they've been going through. And I know it's not easy. These are difficult decisions that we are making. And we're making it on behalf of the safety of our children and all the people that work in our school systems. So, it's not easy. And I, I am a parent, remote learning is difficult. And I can attest to that with four kids of my own going through some sort of remote learning. But, you know, the positivity rate here is quite alarming. And I'm glad to see that we, as a school district, are collaboratively working to try to make changes and adapt and try to improve the, the remote learning if, in fact, the numbers don't warrant going back to school, whether it's a hybrid or full in, in-school learning. Because that has, that also has obstacles as well as pros and cons that, that come with those. And one thing's for sure, that I know that our school committee, as well as our superintendent, do have what's in the best interest of our students and, and our workers and all the teachers on that, being part of that school committee and knowing my colleagues on that school committee, know everybody on that school committee has the best interest of those kids at mind. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor. At this point, we're going to open it up. There's some members of the public that wish to speak. When we allow you to speak, could you just please name, state your name and address for the record? And let you talk. Jennifer Jones. I'm sorry, Carol. You know, Carol, let Jen go and then we'll go to you, okay? And she's already speaking.
Is there somebody else who's waiting to speak first? Because I can wait.
She can, I can go after her. She can go.
Go ahead, Carol. Ms. Ty.
Oh, hi, Jen.
Hi.
I, I would just like to point out about how ready we are, that we haven't been sitting there just bemoaning the fact that we couldn't have our kids in school and that our positivity rate was so high. You know, the mayor said something a little bit earlier about when we had a, just a 5% positivity rate. He said he'd give anything to have that rate back again when they're so high right now. And the problem, the problems that we deal with, we deal with them. For example, fixing the rooms, going through and doing all of the things that we need to do, buying the air purifiers. And one thing I would like to point out is where our teachers are. You know, in communities where there is remote learning, I would say the vast majority of them, certainly the majority of them, do not have their teachers in school. They are all at home. But I think that was a wonderful decision that both the school committee, led by the superintendent, and that the teachers made, that the teachers would be in their classrooms. So, whenever, I hope that this comes sooner rather than later, whenever the time comes, our teachers are ready. Their classrooms are ready. We have all of the tech, tech problems dealt with by now. We, they can, the kids can come back to much improved buildings, to much, to a much improved setting, and to teachers who are just dying to have them come back. And this has been a really, from my point of view, because I've been part of all the discussions with the teachers, it's been a really wonderful working relationship. Do we agree all the time? No, of course not. But, and under Dr. Kelly and the mayor as chair, I say that we have, we are ready. We are doing everything that we possibly can. We just need the community to do what they can. And then we can pull the kids back into school. But I, for one, want to follow the medical problem. We don't know what, what the future for someone who has one of, who has been infected by this disease. I would hate to have, you know, we believe that children are perfectly safe, but we don't know that. And I would hate to create a generation of children who had health problems resulting from it. So it's the medical advice to which I want to listen. But in the meantime, I'm proud, I'm certainly proud of what we are doing right now. We're not perfect, but we are trying so hard to get there. And thank you to the mayor for his leadership. Thank you to Dr. Kelly. She's not only one of the most respected, she's probably one of the top three most respected, and I won't name the other two, in the entire state. We're lucky to have her, and I hope the city understands how lucky we are too. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Ms. Jones, name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm at 103 Bank Street in Winthrop. But I am a teacher at the Garfield School, and I've been teaching there for over 20 years. I just, I've been watching this all night, and I was really taken back by your statement. I felt like it was almost an attack on teachers. We've been everything we've known to make this work. And I think we're doing a really good job doing what we're doing. So when I hear you saying that ideas that we want to travel rather than being in the classroom, it's insulting, to say the least. I see that we're all on a Zoom call right now because the numbers are so high. And to blame us not being in classrooms, or the children not being in classrooms because of teachers, it's pretty sad, to say the least. Because that's our job, is to be with the children and to work really hard with the children. So to have you act like this is something that we want just in the sake of wanting it so we can travel, is really says a lot about how you feel about the teachers in the city. Seriously, I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, but I mean, I'm insult, I'm insulted, and I'm sure a lot of teachers that are on here are also insulted. I mean, like, I mean, we are at a rate of 10% positivity rate in this city, and you want to blame the teachers that were not back in school? I think there's a lot of things going on in this city that's a lot, and it's not the teachers that are making this happen. Right? So, to insinuate that, like I said, is very offensive.
Fair enough.
Mr. President, point of inquiry.
Counselor, Counselor, hang on a second. I just want to respond.
I just have a question for Jennifer real quick.
Yes, please.
Was it something, was it, Jen, was it something one of us said?
No, 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 it was Mr. O'Keefe.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
What he was saying about how teachers want to, he even made the statement of travel. I don't know about, I don't know who's traveling, but I'm not traveling. I'm not traveling. I even have a hard time thinking about going into the school and worrying about it. But I do it because, you know what? That's my job. So I do that. But to insinuate that...
One of the things that we all have to recognize is that this is a very tense and emotional situation for everybody.
We're being attacked by it. I feel like I have to stand up for me.
I hear you. I think that there were also a lot of people on this call tonight who have said great things about teachers.
Oh, and I'm not, and I understand everything that was said. But I, but I also was insulted. And like a lot of people probably were.
Ms. Jones, Ms. Jones, let me state for the record. My intention is to never insult any teachers. As I mentioned, I'm very friendly, and some of my best friends in the city are teachers. Some of my best, my, my best friends in my life are teachers and administrators in the school system. Whenever it would intend to insult a teacher in the school system, okay? And I said, like I said, I'm speaking on behalf of many, 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 many parents. And all, and I did not say that you'd rather travel than be in school. I said, there was some hypocrisy in regards to some of, some of these stances. But again, I do apologize if that's how you took it. I would never, ever mean to insult a teacher, okay? But I also have many, you know, I, I'm not going to, you know, go into it back and forth. I think I, I think you stated the keys very, very well, and I understand that, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Ms. Burke. Name and address for the record.
Sorry. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was on mute for a second. My name is Ashley Burke. I live at 3 Manson Street. But I, like Jen, am also a teacher at the Garfield Elementary School.
In State Revere?
No, I'm sorry, inland. And I was not prepared to speak, so I apologize. But I just had a few comments as well. Dr. Kelly had already addressed a lot of the points from an educator's standpoint, but I just wanted to share on behalf of a teacher. And I know Jen already covered this point, but teachers are not the reason why we're not back in school. You had asked for our help in doing that, but I really don't think that there is anything we can do. It's the Revere's numbers, and as Ms. Ty stated, that it's the community needs to kind of work on that. I also wanted to say that I think Revere is doing an over-the-top job with remote learning. I would venture to say we're doing one of the best. I know a lot of people that live in wealthy cities or other communities that are either remote or hybrid, and they're extremely disappointed with the quality of their children's education. I can actually speak on behalf of my sister. Her kids go to school in Swambscott, and they are barely on Zoom with their teachers. They have very minimal, very minimal direct instruction. And I know the teachers at our school, I can't speak for all teachers, but the teachers at our school are on Zoom with our kids every minute of the day other than we're on prep or if we have lunch. So the entire day, we are face-to-face with kids, working and teaching. So I think that as, as though it's not the best situation, I think we're doing a great job with it. I also wanted to say that I teach first grade. It's incredibly difficult to do remotely. But I will tell you, every day, my students tell me they want to go back to school, as Dr. Kelly said. But being remote, they're still happy, they're learning, they're having fun online. And every day before we say goodbye and we leave for the day, I have kids telling me that they want to stay on and keep learning. So as, as bad as the situation is, and as much as none of us like it, I think that we're all trying to do the best that we can in this situation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Hughes? Patrick Hughes?
Sorry, let me unmute myself there. My name's Patrick Hughes. I'm not a Revere resident, but I do teach life skills over at the SBA.
Name and, name and address for the record.
So, as I said, I, I do not actually live in Revere, but I am a Revere Public School teacher. I teach a small learning group over at the SBA. And let me say first and foremost, thank you for all the time and effort you guys have put in for navigating us through this horrible pandemic. It does not go unnoticed, and it is very much appreciated. One thing I just want to mention about students, the group of students that Dr. Kelly was talking about potentially bringing back into schools, is that there are a lot of unique challenges that these, that are present with these kids. So not only do they suffer from issues with learning, many of them also have numerous health ailments as well. in uh, ailments as well, um, such as breathing issues, cardiac issues, respiratory issues. Um, and so just because the student has a disability and is struggling learning online doesn't mean that they're not going to be impacted by the virus where they go in school in person. Uh, additionally, several of these kids suffer from different behavioral issues, sensory issues, and a variety of other problems where wearing a mask can be very problematic and, and oftentimes just won't be done. And so if they were to return in person, there's really no way to guarantee their safety if they were even provided with a mask. Uh, it's likely that many of these students wouldn't be able to wear one. And so if they're in school in person and the numbers are the way they are, how are we supposed to keep these kids safe? You know, we're trying to make sure that this one population of students is the, as protected and taken care of as possible. And I will absolutely admit that learning online is certainly challenging for them. I think it's more important to focus on their overall safety than anything else.
If I, if I could respond to that, Counselor Keefe, just briefly. Uh, Patrick, those are really good points and ones that we've talked about. Uh, we don't anticipate that all of the kids in those uh, groups would be uh, you know, wanting to come back for in-person learning. We think there are a number of them, uh, in particular, the kids who are medically compromised, whose parents might prefer to keep them in a remote model. Um, and we also recognize that uh, some students uh, behaviorally might be challenged. And if then, if they're not able to um, meet our guidelines for safety in the school, then they would be invited to stay remote as well. So good, very excellent points and, and points that we will visit with families in determining if we can get back, who are the right kids to bring back.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kelly, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Uh, Ms. Blank, Amy Blank, name and address for the record, please.
Amy Blank, former Revere resident, currently residing at Hawthorne Place in Boston. I'm a teacher in Revere Public Schools since 2014. And I joined this call really just hoping for a broader understanding of where the city thoughts were on this difficult situation we're in. And it was really reassuring to hear the emphasis on following the science. Uh, Counselor O'Keefe, I found it very bold of you to share that personal opinion at the beginning of this section, and I hope that this dialogue about the frustrations that parents are feeling and the frustration that staff is feeling is something we can come together about, as was discussed earlier. You know, the schools are hoping to support our families in our community and it can only happen through open dialogue. And just kind of, I'd like to share a nice personal anecdote from my teaching day today that goes back to Dr. Kelly's statement of how much the students are missing the social interaction. We are still able to give that to them in small ways. One of my students had a birthday today and his classmates chose to stay on the video meeting during lunchtime to just have some social time with him and celebrate. So even where this is really challenging for our students, I think we all just have to remember to look at the positives that are happening day in and day out and know we're doing the best we can in really challenging circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blank. Great words of advice. I'll take them as well. Thank you. Um, Darlene, name and address for the record? Sorry.
My name is Darlene Jones. Can you hear me?
Yep, and address for the record?
80 Jones Road, Revere, Massachusetts.
Good.
And I'm a parent, I'm a grandmother, and I also have a very ill husband. And my daughter was one of the teachers that spoke. I just wanted to speak because my, I have a mother that died of COVID. It's not a great thing. My kid, my grandchildren had to deal with that. My daughter had to deal with that as well as the rest of the family. Now, um, I wanted to talk about a few points that was brought up by Fauci and other doctors on, that I've been listening to. And they said people shouldn't be around people when, especially with these high numbers that are going up daily. And not just here, but in the rest of the country. And that people shouldn't be around people they're not ordinarily with. And, you know, except, you know, like their own inner circle. I have my grandchildren. I can't even go and hug them. I have to see them like very short times while they're wearing masks. I'm I, yes. My heart breaks for these kids not being able to go to school. But it, and it breaks for me that my granddaughter, like my grand, I don't know if you're still hearing me?
Yep, yep.
My granddaughter just had her sweet 16 birthday, which we, she couldn't have. So I had to leave presents and for her. Um, you know, these things are happening, but it's not anybody's fault. It's the pandemic. And yes, it's sad for the kids that can't have prawns, that can't have their sweet 16, that can't have a lot of things. But it's not the teacher's fault. The teachers want to be with their kids. They can't. And a lot of the teachers, like my daughter, have parents who are high risk. Like my husband, who was very ill, who goes, his grandchildren are his wife, and he can't hug them. And there are other pet teachers who live with their parents who are at high risk. There's teachers who have children who are high risk. Now, you're all meeting virtually, and it's easier for you to separate in a room than a bunch of kids. Now, when you put kids in a classroom, and even if it's hybrid, do you think these kids aren't going to want to touch, feel, hug? They're going to be excited to see each other. They're not going to stay separated, nor are they going to want to stay separated from their teachers.
Right.
And a lot of these teachers and kids are at risk. So, and even, even the fact that the teachers go to the classroom three days a week. I think that's really not right either. You're meeting virtually. Why don't you go and meet each other three days a week? You're going to be, you're in a building, you're not even in the same building. I, I think that's unfair. But the other thing is, I believe as far as the city's concerned, we need a mask mandate. Because I live near the beach and the only way I can get some peace of mind once in a while, I live near the beach and I walk the beach. I stopped doing that. A lot of times, or I walk near the water because people walk four and five in a row. I have to walk out in the street to separate from these people not wearing masks. It's sad.
Thank you. And um, and, you know, I, I think we, we agree with a lot of what you, you had to say.
Counselor, if I, if I could just point out that um, because I think it's important. Uh, secretaries, custodians, and administrators are in the school buildings five days a week.
Right. I understand. I know that. Um, I understand. Uh, we have another resident, John Stamaltopoulos. Name, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good, good evening. My name is John Stamaltopoulos. I reside at 15 Sul Shider River. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, it was not planned on, but I've heard probably five or six out of town callers calling to speak. And um, I'm, I'm glad that we have such a great attendance from people that don't reside in the city. But they are obviously, they are stakeholders since they are teachers and employed in this city. But I'm calling um, really to, to further the fact that first, I think we have done an excellent job compared to other towns and cities managing the pandemic. But I do think we have great room for improvement. I am a proponent of opening the schools and having the kids back in the classroom and back on athletic fields and back having social interaction. Um, I, I'm not antivirus. I know it's real. Um, my own children have had it in my own home. Um, one of my children and in-house transmission is highly unlikely and it didn't happen. But that doesn't mean people don't go to church and spread it to everybody, right? Uh, so I am a believer in the virus. I've been impacted by it. But I also have kids with other conditions that it's been a struggle to get them back in a school after six and 12 months to get them back in a normal routine. Um, and that routine has ended for so many kids that had a struggle. Um, and we're not providing adequate resources to kids that are in need. Um, and to kids where we are a 65 or 68% um, you know, minority community that we have ESL students who are not being serviced accordingly, are falling off the radar. And I know we talk a lot of stats on this call, but I've spoken with teachers on both sides of the fence, ones that have stood very, stood their line saying they don't feel comfortable going back. But others that are very receptive to going back and state that the union has a stance that even if the schools are open, they're not going back, right? So I'm trying, I don't know who to hold accountable, who to ask for help. But I hear Mayor Rigo, you said you haven't heard the frustration from the parents. And I don't know how you haven't heard that, and I'm sorry if you hadn't, because now all the more I want to scream from the mountains because everywhere I go, all I hear is frustration in this community from the parents. And, and I hear frustration from the teachers that wish to go back. So I haven't seen a, a plan. Um, and I try to listen in on as many of the school committee and council meetings as I can. I, I feel that we are not prepared to go back, but that means we haven't prepared, and that's, that's a greater concern. Um, what's going to happen, we talked a lot about the vaccine. Our students are, for the most part, 95% under the age of 17. Um, they can't get vaccinated. So what's going to happen? Are the teachers going to be required to have vaccines and the schools going to be open? Or are we going to have another reason then where the virus is still, you know, two years from now, the virus is still real, kids can't be vaccinated? So we're still going to keep the schools closed? I think there is a responsibility of if you are high risk, you reserve the right to ask for your child to learn remotely. Or as a teacher, you reserve the right to ask to, to work remotely. But I have children in three different schools and I, I can, I'll speak very confidently. The Pawarver is doing an exceptional job, um, because, maybe because the, the younger students are more engaged because they're afraid not to be. The Garfields has, has done a terrible job. Um, the high school, um, it, it's a 50/50. Some of the teachers are doing exceptional and some have a lot of room for improvement. And I've tried to listen to every one of those town halls and I ask very specific questions that I can't get an answer on. Um, so there's a lot of concern. Um, I'm seeing teachers, I, I know there was some conversation on this call about people are opposing teachers being in the classroom. I support teachers being in the classroom, even if it's empty for the fact that I think it's the only way to have them accountable. Because I have, to this day, teachers, my daughter, two weeks ago, sat on the couch, three classes in a row, a teacher did not join and start the meeting. That's unacceptable. And I've called the schools without calls back. Okay, so someone needs to hold them accountable. Even after COVID and before COVID, we lacked an adequate, adequate communication system from the schools to the homes. Every school and every, even different classes within the school uses a different modality. They use dojo, they use, they use remind me, they use Google Classroom. There, there's 12 or 13 different mechanisms to communicate. And as a parent with three kids in three different schools, there's zero continuity. And that problem was here long before COVID, and that's been brought up at meetings in the past. There is, there, we lack a central communication um, schematic, and I don't see that going away. This was the opportunity to implement something um, with consistency and a uniform front with some continuity across the district, which hasn't happened. And that's not going to happen. So I, I'm, I know this is turning into, it's very much a monologue, but I want to support um, what, what Counselor Keefe said for the fact that I, in the community, I know we're hurting our students. I, I'm an active, I'm active in our community, coaching, I'm on the governing board for the Pawarver. I work in mental health as, as a professional. And we're do, we're doing more harm to our students, keeping them isolated and remote than by exposing them to COVID-19. And I know people won't agree with that, but I'll tell you that's, that's the science you're all preaching. That's what it supports, is that kids are incredibly resilient. But they are falling behind academically. Children that were good students are falling behind academically. Kids that were poor students are, are basically, don't even have a fighting chance going forward. So I just hope to say, at least lay out a clear communication of what the plan is. Um, I'm all for testing. I know our positivity rate is high. I'm sure we're only capturing a fraction of what it really is and what it has been throughout the past year. But with that being said, our death rate has reduced. We're, we're doing very well as a city. I think we've done an excellent, an excellent job providing food, services, resources, rental support, small business support. That's all been exceptional. And I've seen my neighbors shine, stand up and, and just become exceptional members of this community. But I just want to say, I would like to turn to a classroom, and I don't have any visibility to um, how we're going to do that, um, even with a vaccine.
Uh, th- thank you, Mrs. Stamaltopoulos, and I appreciate your comments. Um, and you are very articulate. I know the mayor wished to speak, but I did want to, and I know we can't talk about the entire plan because there was the school committee did have a very nice meeting uh, earlier this week and they, you know, they talked about some of the highlights on the plan. Uh, so there is a plan. Um, I know that there'll be, need to be some updates down the road as well, because more information is going to continue to come. I know the mayor wants to address this and I want to make sure I get to more of the, more of the residents. Mr. Mayor?
Just really quickly, Mr. President, I, I wanted to, to put a fine point on the, on the um, the point that uh, John mentioned, which was that we haven't heard uh, that level of frustration in uh, these kind of public forums, I guess is what I was um, trying to say. And, and I, and I, I think I reiterated the fact that I have heard from many frustrated parents. And uh, I certainly understand the frustration that, that parents are, are um, kind of going through. Uh, but to hear it publicly and for the leadership of the city to hear it publicly on uh, this kind of meeting, I think is uh, is powerful and important. And that was my, my point about that. So um, I don't want anyone to think that I, I haven't heard from, from uh, from parents. I've, I've heard from plenty and I, I, I know we'll continue to hear from them um, as we, as we navigate.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Michelle, and then I know there's a few more residents. It's Michelle. Elaine Michelle, name and address for the record. Elaine Michelle? Yeah? Maybe she's gone. Um, Dawn Martelli, may I allow you to talk? Unmute.
Hello, everybody.
Name and address.
Uh, Dawn Martelli, 39 Dale Street, Ward 4. Um, hello, Mr. Mayor, hello, Council, School Committee, thank you for all your hard work. Uh, this is by no means anything anybody's ever dealt with, period. So to come up with solutions to any of all this, you'd make you all magicians. So one, I, I applaud you all for the hard work you do on behalf of our students. I have a uh, a junior in high school and an eighth grader at the Garfield. Um, both frankly, rocking the online learning. Um, they've embraced it. Um, my wife and I are diligent about what they do, their routine, uh, the, the interaction with their teachers. And we treat it just like they were going to school. Uh, we have our lunch breaks at 11:30. I own a small business in Boston and I've been working remote since March. I haven't seen my team since then. And we've all had to change and life has been so disrupted for everybody. And so to, 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 this is not a time to point fingers, but really a time for us as a community to come together and talk about solutions based on the sandbox to which we have to play. And that's science and feedback and the professionals, I, I'm a somebody who's in public relations and marketing. I have no idea about science and vaccines, but I will trust the people that are smarter than me to tell us what we need to do as a community and I entrust you all to make the same decisions. And I frankly, think it's, it's a, it's a big responsibility for us parents as well to be a collaborative partner in this as well. I mean, we have a job uh, to, to be able to make sure we are on our, our kids, to make sure they're out of their bed at, at 7:30, you know, at their desk and, and making sure they have all the access they need to get their schoolwork done. And I, you know, I thank my lucky stars that we're in a different position than some families in the city. And I know that you all are really working hard to get those underprivileged families the access they need. And it's not an easy thing to get thousands and thousands of Chromebooks to kids that just never had internet connection three, four, seven months ago. So it's, it's all hard work and I really appreciate you all to moving forward. And my only call to action here is, instead of continuing to wallow in, 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 get into the, the misery of the issues, there's a lot of smart people on this Zoom and in the community to figure out what we can do collaboratively to come up with solutions based on the rules and engagement rules we have that are available to us now. Because you know that narrative is going to change in a month, in two, in three, in four. This is going to be an absolutely fluid situation. So Pat, I absolutely feel your pain point. Brian, uh, Mr. Mayor, I understand the situation you're in and the school committee and the city council. This is a tough job. This is a very, very tough job. I, I think I have a tough job with running my business, but I don't want the job you all have. So I applaud the effort you are putting forth and uh, whatever we can do as parents and as a community, I think that there's a number of us out there that are willing to help however we can. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, Don, and good comments. Again, I, I totally. Thank you, Dawn, and good comments. Again, I, I totally agree with, you know, collaboration will work a lot better. So we have, um, Ms. Martin and then Danny Day.
Hey. Oh. Can you hear me? I don't know. Elaine Moschella.
Ms. Martin?
Oh, oh, no, I'm sorry.
I am here too, but I think that was Ms. Moschella talking.
Yes, I, I messed up. I, I tried to unmute before. Is it possible for me to just say a couple?
Ms. Moschella, go ahead, then we'll go to Ms.
Okay, my name is Elaine Moschella. I live at fifty Stevens Street. I am a teacher at the Hill School. And I don't want to reiterate anything that anybody else said. I am older than fifty. I don't want to say old. And so technology is super hard for me. I spent two hours last night, two hours the night before, and I barely got things done. I rely on my team. Um, I rely on the teachers in the city. We want nothing more than to have the kids back. If you had any idea how much work it is to, we can't use any of our material. We have to create everything to be put on the computer. Not to mention, I, we can't even move half of us because we're sitting in a chair all day. And we don't, the only time we have to get up is for lunch. Um, and our prep. So we're sore, our backs, our hips, everything is sore. We want the kids back, but only when it's safe. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you. Appreciate what you said. Ms. Martin?
Hi, this is Kristen Martin. I'm at one-eleven Utah Street in East Boston. And I'm also a teacher at the Garfield. Um, and just first of all, thank you so much for those of you who had such kind words for teachers. I know I can speak for many teachers when I say that the peak limits of our creativity and innovation have been put to the test. And I spent this morning putting origami in the mail so that my advisory students and I can do origami virtually together. Um, and I'm really heartened also to hear, uh, many council members and school committee members talk about the importance of following scientific guidelines when making these decisions rather than acting with our emotions. Um, or going off of unscientific bases. Um, the problem is we do not actually have found scientific data for many of the points we are claiming, especially about, um, transmissions in schools. And it's really quite easy to go, um, and find a study that actually supports either side, um, to this situation because we actually just don't know. So I just, three very quick points of concern that I did want to raise. Um, I am an ESL teacher. So I am quite alarmed to hear of the still potential talk of special ed or ESL students returning to schools. To me, it doesn't sit right that if it's not safe for all students to return, then we're actually sending these kids into the lion's den when I actually don't think the science supports that that's safe. Um, the second thing I just wanted to say is that I really appreciated Dr. Kelly. Um, many of the things that you said, defending teachers and defending our, our agreement and, and the science on which we've come to make these agreements. I do feel like I'm having some cognitive dissonance about actually your position when I did see you tweeted, um, a, a letter from several, uh, superintendents and that was kind of really putting the blame on teachers as the main obstacle to reopening. So I was quite disheartened to see that. Um, and then last, I think, uh, many teachers have very eloquently kind of expressed their, their, um, insultedness, I guess, uh, at some of the comments tonight, but, uh, we, we are here and we're paying attention to what you're saying. And I think, um, Mr. Keith, when you said that we are altering their lives, the students' lives in ways that we, they will never recover from and that it's reprehensible what we're doing. I think you actually need to take accountability for the specific things that you are saying. And this coming from someone who's gone into tremendous debt, has sacrificed personally to do this job to try and change the lives of children. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Danny Day. Name and address for the record.
My name is Danny Day and I live at eight Elwood Place in Revere, Massachusetts. And I would, um, like to first say that I am on the other end of the spectrum. I am a parent of two, uh, Revere students and two Revere athletes. And I'm not happy with the situation. Um, I work in the healthcare profession. I know the risk. I know the danger. I am in the third highest risk profession. I am not home every day to be with my children. I'm blessed because my children are old enough to take care of themselves, but I can tell you right now, the, the remote learning, especially the Garfield used to be, my children chose to go to the Garfield. They wanted to go to the Garfield. And then at the beginning of the year, we got the letter that the Garfield was no longer going to be extended day because of funding or whatnot. Now my Garfield student, he gets up at eight forty in the morning and he is off by eleven-thirty. I don't understand what kind of remote learning that is. I have not heard one word from, actually I heard from the principal last week, but that's because I asked for transcripts because I'm planning on sending my son to a different high school. Um, you know, I, I, the, the lack of communication from the Garfield, I'm surprised. I haven't, I haven't gotten one email, haven't gotten one letter, one phone call, nothing. The high school sends out a weekly, um, the high school does send out a weekly email um, to the parents to, I guess, it's update and let us know what's going on. But you know, my, again, I have a senior. And you know, it's not just about the prom. It's not just about, um, missing out on activities. He said to me, and it's, it's really sad. He's going on, he's going to be going off to college. He's only had basically two and a half years of high school. And these are supposed to be the best days of his life and he can't have them. And it's scary. And I am not an anti-masker. I am not in, you know, conspiracy person. I do, I definitely do believe in this virus, but I too also follow the science. And, uh, Florida, Florida's school system is wide open. Saint Mary's is open. There are schools in communities around us that are opening and making it work. And I have several friends that are teachers. I have family members that are teachers. I know there's a bunch of teachers that do want to go back. It seems like there's a lack of communication between, and I don't know, is it not our business? But I do think it's our business because I live here, my children go to school here and it is affecting them. It's affecting everybody, but it seems like there's a lack of communication. And again, like John had said, we don't, we haven't heard a plan. And with the percentage of cases that we have to be at in Revere, personally, I don't feel we're ever going to get there. So how long are we going to keep our kids home?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Day. Um, we have another attendee, Ms. Garrow. Ms. Garrow. Gina Garrow, name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, Gina Garrow, um, teacher in Revere at the Garfield School. I'm a special education teacher. I'm a mom. Um, I'm also.
Address, or?
Yes, I'm sorry. I live in Somerville, Massachusetts. Uh, but I teach at the Garfield School and, um, I forget. Okay. So I, I've just been like debating about whether I wanted to say anything because so many people have said already what I want to say. So I don't want to repeat and I'm not going to say it again, but something that I did want to say that hasn't been said, and I feel like it's a reality that that we have to grapple with is that, um, just today, it's been reported that, um, the state reported that nine hundred and twenty-three more, more, uh, positive cases of COVID in Massachusetts schools have been reported. And this is the highest number ever that have reported since school started. Four hundred more cases than just last week. I mean, that, that is the reality that we are in that I feel like people are not really grappling with. Um, also this week, the Framingham schools, which were only open for high-risk, um, high-needs students, they closed and they're back to fully remote again because of in-school transmission. And the superintendent has come out challenging the idea that schools are not a place of transmission, saying, yes, schools, schools are a place of transmission. And now they are, they are fully remote. So I, I think it's like what we want and what really is the reality are very, are two very different things. And, um, again, teachers want to be in school. We want to do it safely. Our agreement is about safety. It's not about keeping students out of schools. It's about keeping teachers and students safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much, everybody, for being here on this call so late tonight.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. So it looks like that's it from the, uh, part attendees. I know we have, uh, Counsel McKenna wishes to, uh, make one comment and, um, you know, we might be able to get out of here tonight if we're all good. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just received an email from a former colleague of mine, June Krinsky-Rada, who was, who was an art teacher. And she said, I'm watching the meeting on YouTube while preparing supplies that I bought for my students. It would be great if the schools, schools spend money on supplies for the kids to use at home that would help them academically and with their social emotional needs. So, um, Diane Kelly, I'm going to give this to you again. So, but.
Thanks. June and I, June and I are easily in touch with each other.
Oh, great.
So she can definitely send that to me.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
If I could, could I just touch on a couple more things?
Please, yes, sure.
So the first thing is about a plan. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we did develop our plan over the summer. We had over a hundred people participate in the development of that plan. Uh, and it exists on our website still today. Um, our hope, if it hasn't been clear to everybody, is that we can get to a place as a city and as a community where we can bring kids back to school. And I know that that's the hope of the large majority of people involved in the public school system, whether they are parents, students, teachers, uh, other staff members, school committee members, um, or whatever the case may be. Um, but the only way to do that is to do it safely. Uh, and I think that's really important to think about. And I do think that, uh, the vast majority of our staff have done yeoman's work over the last nine months, um, and, and trying to make sure the schools are ready. I can tell you, as I said on the school committee meeting on Wednesday, if, if miraculously COVID disappeared tomorrow and they said, open your doors, but be cautious because we're not sure what's going to happen, we would be ready for that. We have the PPE, our ventilation systems are in order. We do need the, um, air purifiers for the high school. I will, that's, that's the one piece. Um, that I would say is out of context. Um, but we're, we are ready to go. We have our students co-horted to decrease the cross-mingling and that includes at, uh, the freshman and sophomore level at the high school. Um, our staff has done unbelievable work. And to the point that, uh, many of the teachers made tonight, uh, many of them do unbelievable, incredible work with their students every day as well. And, and Patrick, I know that there are those some, uh, that fall into the category more like what you described. It's the same as, is true in every other profession in every other organization. Um, but I think it is mentioning that the vast majority of teachers really are doing unbelievable work. And, um, to the points of several of the parents, uh, I'm not pleased to hear that you're not having communication from schools. Uh, for the schools that were mentioned tonight, those will be addressed first thing tomorrow. Uh, it's not acceptable to me that parents are not having, uh, calls to the schools returned or emails not returned, uh, or whatever the case may be. So we will certainly address that. Um, it sincerely is our goal to do the best we can with, with the situation that we're in right now. Um, and you know, I think I would just ask that we all give each other a little bit of grace. Um, it's not healthy for the kids to see the adults fighting. And you all know that in your own relationships, um, in your homes, uh, and with your, with your friends and colleagues. Um, we do have to find a way as, uh, one of the callers early tonight, I think it was, uh, Dawn Martelli said that the only way that we find the light at the end of the tunnel is by working together. So hopefully we can do more of this in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. If I, if I can close with this, if you all grant me that, um, I wanted to, uh, state again, um, for the, for the record and again and again, um, I do appreciate everything, the unbelievable work that the teachers have put in specifically through this pandemic. I might want to, like I said, one of my best friends, um, they said that they go to bed at sometimes ten or eleven o'clock at night, preparing their plan for the next day to wake up at five in the morning to continue to plan for the next day, that day because of how challenging it's been to put these, um, the, these, uh, learning plans together online. And in some, some cases, some cities, these teachers are doing it half and half. They're doing kids online and, and in person. So I, I, I'll never discount that. And, um, I hope that, and I, I know that, you know, we can take and pick apart every word, but I hope that that's not what was taken out of this. Where my goal would be on, on this is that you understand when sometimes the narrative, and this isn't anyone being, um, disrespectful, but that they haven't heard this or that the, the opposite is, some people have said that, oh no, everyone's just fine with it. I'd like to just think that I'm not just speaking on my own. And I speak for, on behalf of many parents in the city that are, you know, understandably frustrated. And that doesn't mean they're a bunch of babies. It just means that they have real concerns. They have to, um, be able to articulate to you and to the group that makes these decisions so that you can make the best decision, decision for them, what you always have. And everyone on the school committee always has. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's the biggest ta- takeaway. And I think that some of the comments when the parents mentioned, uh, working collaboratively were probably the best comments tonight. No matter which side they're on, they're a hundred percent right. We'll never get to the, the end result unless we work together. So I just hope that, I hope that this opens up that line of communication and there's more acceptability towards, working towards the ultimate goal. Okay. The ultimate goal is obviously is getting kids the best education they possibly can get. And if, if everyone's using that as the goal, then that's great. All right. So I appreciate everyone. I hope everyone had, uh, understood tonight, very informative on many different, um, uh, fronts. Uh, the mayor and the team are awesome. And we really appreciate what you're doing with, uh, the COVID response. I know the numbers are not where we want them to be. And again, you know, we talk about what our community is and that, that is the unfortunate makeup of our, makeup of our community. We're a working class community. We, a lot of people can't just stay home. They, you know, otherwise they're not going to be able to pay rent. They're not going to be able to get Christmas presents. Not going to be able to support their family. So the, the, the choice to go in or the choice to do certain things that they have to do. We get that. So let's just keep, keep putting up a good fight. Um, and, uh, happy Hanukkah to those out there celebrating Hanukkah. I hope you enjoyed this Friday night edition of, uh, Joint Committee and I won't ever do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a great night.